Okay, good morning. I will call this Jefferson County Commission meeting to order for Thursday, October 1st, 2020. Commissioner Compton, will you recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us all?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. We've got like three sets, so September 3rd.
I'll move approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on September 3rd.
Second.
The motion is on the floor for the September 3rd regular meeting minutes. I do have a correction. I mean, I wasn't there, but just for item number nine on page six. It said the lease was to Lyle Tab Jr. Well, technically, Lyle Tab Jr. is deceased. That was my father-in-law. I believe it should be Lyle C. Tab and Sons Incorporated, just to be, you know. That's all I have for that.
It is definitely who we have a lease with, so you're right, it should be. That's the name of the lease, so we should change that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Do we have any other comments or questions on those minutes? The motion is to approve the September 3rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes as corrected. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. September 11th, 2020, public hearing and special session.
I'll move approval of the special session minutes held on September 11th, 2020. And I'll amend that to include a public hearing and special session.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have any questions or discussions, corrections on those minutes? All those in favor of approving the September 11th, 2020, public hearing and special session minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's see, September 17th, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
I'll move you approve September 17th, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Yeah. You have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the September 17th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. September 17th, meeting minutes approved unanimously. And I'll just remind you guys to, you know, give me a holler or anything if I go too fast. I'm trying to train myself to delay after hearing, you know, people speak or the votes to make sure there's something, I don't want to go too fast, so. Alrighty, we are at requisitions for October 1st.
I'll move we approve requisitions for October 1st, 2020, in the amount of $15,139.38.
I'll second.
I have a, the motion is on the floor, and I have a question, which I'm assuming I know, let's see. The one for data and electrical at the visitor's center. I'm assuming that's just going to be a pass-through and we will be reimbursed for that expense. Stephanie?
Yes, we have been, we have been buying the supplies for that, and then this visitor's center is reimbursing us. If you'll recall, we had a discussion a couple of months ago about them paying us back, and we decided that we would, you know, we wouldn't, we would give them some time to pay us back.
Okay.
They are still planning on paying us back, they just, with their, with their cash flow.
Correct.
As quickly as they would, but they are still planning on paying us back.
Okay, well, I'm just double-checking. So I thought that was true, but I wanted to make sure I understood it. All right. Any other questions? The motion on the floor is to approve the October 1st, 2020 requisitions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Accounts payable, September 24th, 2020.
I'll move approval of accounts payable for September 24th, 2020, in the amount of $213,527.38. And I think I got that right when I looked at the, I didn't see a date on the list, so hopefully that's the right. I had a lot of different numbers for different dates, and I think I got that right, but not sure.
That's what I have, but yes.
Okay.
It's hard to keep up with it with the emails and, and trying to go back and find them and when, matching them to the agenda. I'll second that motion. We have any questions or discussion on that?
What was the amount of that again?
All those in favor approving accounts payable for September 24th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Accounts payable for October 1st, 2020.
I'll move we approve accounts payable for October 1st, 2020, in the amount of
Second.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the list for why we are up that high, but it makes sense. Payment out to, or transfer to the ESA and some quarterly things to, to Parks and Rec and so forth, the Convention of Visitor Bureau and Development Authority, so it all adds up. Any other questions on accounts payable for October 1st? All those in favor of approving accounts payable October 1st, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're down to manual checks for September 25th, and I, from what I had, I don't think we have any.
Well, I, I think I found them, I guess they're the right ones.
Well, if you got them, that's fine, because...
Okay, I have September 25th, and I'll make the motion that we approve manual checks for September 25th, 2020, in the amount of $475,810.43. That's the number I have.
Okay.
Hold on, I'm double-checking it.
Yeah.
I don't, hold on. I don't see.
I have them in an email.
I don't have them.
Let me see.
No, I have to sort my emails, I've got about 100, and I've been afraid to delete anything because...
I know, me too.
I don't see them live though.
I don't see any of them. Yeah, I'm only seeing accounts payable for that.
Yeah.
Oh, is that up? Okay, well, I, yeah, I don't, I thought, I can't find the email right now, but anyway, we can put that off until we can confirm.
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll put that motion off until we're clear on manual checks for September 25th, 2020. Now, I do see manual checks for October 2nd, 2020.
Yeah, I have that in the amount of $6,773.50.
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion before us is to approve manual checks for October 2nd, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're down to payroll.
I'll move approval of payroll for September 17th, 2020, in the amount of $270,378.24.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to approve payroll for September 17th, 2020. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Stephanie, are there any changes to the agenda?
Do not have any changes to report to the agenda today.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment, and just remember, remind folks that you're limited to three minutes, but we welcome your public comments. Do we have anyone, Stephanie?
I already have one person who has told me that they would like to make public comment, and that's Tim Ross. And anyone else who would like to make public comment, you can either send me a message using the chat function, or you can raise your hand and use the little raise-your-hand icon to make, to, actually, no, I have two people, actually, three. So if there's anyone else who would like to speak, while others are making their public comment, you can raise your hand, send me a message, however you'd like to communicate with me that you would like to speak, and I will go ahead and unmute you when it's your turn. The first person we have is Tim Ross, who is, he's a panelist for another reason, so he can go ahead, and you just have to mute yourself, Mr. Ross, and you can go ahead and make your public comment.
Yeah, hi there, good morning. This is Tim Ross. I live out in the county, and I will be a panelist later about the ambulance fever. Right now, I was expecting today to see on the agenda the motion and the supplemental information made by Mr. Atchison concerning the possible conflict of interest in the Planning Commission, and I don't see it on the agenda unless it's buried somewhere else or as part of another item. But I do think that what he's, what he's written should be considered by the commissioners, and it looks like you do have the authority, one of the few people to have the authority to do an investigation, and I think you should, especially this item is such a big deal, the solar energy. And if you're not comfortable or can't, then I think it should be moved on up the chain. I don't know whether that be the DA, or the sheriff, or the state attorney general. But I do think that the information he's provided should be looked into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Great. Our next person is Catherine Jawswick.
All right.
And I actually need to find her to unmute her on me. Okay, Ms. Jawswick, it says that you...
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for wanting to speak. I would like to speak on the Solar Text Amendment. I see it's on your agenda. Like Tim Ross, I also think that you should fully investigate Mr. Atchison's ethics complaint against Stephen Stolliver. I think these are very serious issues, particularly as he is running for county commission as well, and I see you owe it to the constituents of the county to fully investigate that. I would also like to say, I have no idea what your decision is on the Solar Text Amendment. I just see decision on the agenda, and I think you heard an abundance of comments from citizens and farmers, every one of which was in support of solar. But I think what you heard from the majority of the comments was that we should tread lightly because the devil is in the details in allowing these large solar facilities, especially as a principal permitted use. It seems like the more prudent way to go is to approve them on a conditional use basis, and so I hope that you will seriously consider this in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next.
The next person is Christine Weimer. And I need to go unmute her. Ms. Weimer, it says that you are self-muted, so you need to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. I too would like to discuss the item number four under new business, the Solar Text Amendment. And I'm speaking as the president of Jefferson County Foundation. Jefferson County Foundation, again, is in passionate support of renewable clean energy and for the fastest possible conversion to this type of energy and drawdown of greenhouse gases. Over, the current text amendment has several problems, and we urge you to make it a cup or conditional use permit instead of a byright use of land and add in additional protections so that land can be more quickly moved back to agricultural use. We've highlighted over this series of events that you've held, our concerns, those being that the text amendment as it is does not conform to the envisioned Jefferson 2035 Comprehensive Plan. We're concerned it may have a negative effect on the agricultural role and tourism economy as it is currently written, and that by allowing these types of developments in such an unfettered way to allow production for electricity to be used elsewhere would limit our leverage at the state level to improve our own ability to use renewable energy production. However, over the last few events that the county commission has held, including particularly the hearing, I would like to highlight something that was only apparent after those events and all the public speaking, and that is that byright, a byright designation is not necessary for the benefits of this land use. In fact, the proponents of this text amendment, who have spoken at meetings and hearings, have in several cases highlighted important positive impacts that individual solar plants may have in Jefferson County. However, these positive impacts do not rely on the solar facility being a byright use and will be just as well provided for by individually approved conditional use permits or cups. Proponents stress that the land will be more easily returned to agriculture than if it were developed into housing. It seems plausible that this is true, however, this is not, this in and of itself does not support making this a byright use, nor does it make a power plant any more like farming or agriculture. Also, more, more protections should be added so that land may be more quickly returned to agriculture. While there are many such protections that may be possible for limiting length, one example was limiting the length of the leases, so, and by protections, I mean protecting the ability to move the land back to agriculture. In any case, this argument does not support making these facilities a byright use in and of itself. Proponents have pointed out that agricultural land could remain in a family during a downturn in a market sector that that family and farm used to participate in. An example of this has been given is dairy farming, and a dairy farm going out of business and the family wanting to keep the farm in the family but needing to profit from the land in the short to medium term. This is very understandable, and keeping family farms in families is something that the foundation supports wholeheartedly. However, this would not require a byright designation for this use. Instead, those wishing to pursue this use could pursue a cup for the time period they wished to use their land in this way. Again, we stress that provisions that would allow the family to quickly return the land to agricultural use should be introduced. So to recap, I just think the things that we have learned from the community show that this may be a good limited use for farmland, but that limited use would be served by a cup, and it does not need to be a byright use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Stephanie?
I don't have anyone else. Is there last call, anyone who wants to make public comments? Either send me a chat or raise your hand.
And have we had any public comments emailed to us previous to the meeting?
We have not.
Okay, I'm just checking.
All right, doesn't look like we have any more takers.
Okay. Well, we will move on to item number one. Under the presentations, we have the assessor online for exonerations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This first exoneration is in our 2020 personal property book, Harpers Ferry District. It is on a 2019 Mini Cooper, which was filed here by the lease company, but it was never located here or registered in West Virginia. The assessed value is $14,700, tax amount $334.57. The applicant is Financial Services Vehicle Trust, Gabrielle Moore, ticket number 307617.
I move we approve the exoneration, ticket number 307617, as outlined by the assessor.
Second.
All right. We have the exoneration that's been presented, a motion on the floor to approve ticket number 307617. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
This next one is in our 2018 personal property book, Cable Town District. The taxpayer had a 2018 bill and did not realize it and came in and had a 2018 supplemental bill created, and they paid the supplemental bill. So the bill on record needs to be exonerated. Assessed value $4,200 and tax amount $98.68, and the applicant is Leah Peterson, ticket number 310941.
I'll move we approve the exoneration for 310941, as presented by the assessor.
I'll second that. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the exoneration, ticket number 310941, is presented by the assessor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This next supplement is in our 2020 personal property book, Charlestown District. Applicant filed their vehicle in Montegalia County, July 1st, 2019, for the 2020 tax bill and was living in Mon County. Parents had also filed it here in Jefferson County. Yet total amount of the ticket assessed values $8,300, tax amount is $188.91. The applicant is Victor and Sheri Jones, ticket number 302626.
I move we approve the exoneration, ticket number 302626, as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, this next one is in our...
Hold on, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, it's easy to do.
I'm just ready to roll right through, yes.
I know. The motion on the floor is to approve the exoneration, ticket number 302626, as presented by the assessor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next, Angie.
In our 2020 personal property book, Middleway District, taxpayer did not own the 2015 Jeep Wrangler. They actually owned a 2018 Jeep Compass. So we are exonerating the 2015 Jeep Wrangler, and a new bill was done on the Jeep Compass. So the assessed value is $12,300, total amount is $279.95. Applicant is Timothy and Roxanne Ricker, ticket number 313263.
I'll move approval of the exoneration for ticket number 313263, as presented by the assessor.
I'll second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, approve the exoneration for ticket number 313263. All those in favor, say aye.
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 If you didn't hear me, I said aye.
Okay, good. I was, I was trying to watch your face, so I couldn't hear. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Any more, Angie?
Last one.
Okay.
Our 2020 personal property book, taxpayer did not own the 2003 Dodge Durango, but they did own a 2003 Dodge Ram, so they did get a new bill made up. So we need to exonerate this bill, assessed value $1,000, tax amount $22.76. Applicant is Lynn Nordham, ticket number 317048.
I'll move approval of the exoneration, ticket number 317048, as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Okay. The motion before us is approve the exoneration, 317048. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, is that all you have for us, Angie?
Yes, it is. Thank you, and have a good day.
Well, hang on. I don't think we need, I don't think we need to have you a part of this, but it does, I would like to also do item number eight, since it's acknowledgment of the assessor's certificate of compliance. And that basically has to do with the requirements of the Farm Statistics Law, and it's, we have a certificate here from Commissioner of Agriculture Kent Leonhart, and this is something we do yearly, isn't it, Stephanie?
It is, and it's, it's one of the requirements, the assessor receives, and all assessors, sorrys, in the code, the assessor receives additional compensation for complying with those requirements of the law, and we will receive that acknowledgement, then she's entitled to receive that additional compensation. So this is just sort of the, following the, like, the law on the assessor's certificate of compensation.
So do we have to say we have received this from the commissioner, or approve it, or what?
Actually, it's, it's like, we acknowledge receipt of the assessor's compliance.
Okay.
The dumb call.
Okay. Well, I move that we acknowledge that we've received the assessor's certificate of compliance from the commissioners of agriculture as, as required.
Second.
All right. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, assessor, you now have one more thing, you can tick off your list, that's done, done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good day.
Commissioner Tann, it looks like from our attendee list, we have lots of people who made public comments or testified at the public hearing, and so there, it looks like there's lots of interest in these solar amendments.
And I just got done presenting.
So, did you want to schedule a time that we would take that item up so that those who are waiting would, would know when to kind of... So that those who are waiting would know when to kind of tune in for that discussion?
I didn't hear everything that you said.
Okay. So, okay, I'll say, sorry about that. Looking at our attendee list, it looks like there are many individuals who have an interest in the solar amendment. Just looking at the names, there are several people who attended the public hearing and I didn't know if you wanted to set a time certain that we would take up the solar.
Okay, I see. How do fellow commissioners feel that, you know, let's see, it's ten o'clock now. Do we want to set a time for the proposed text amendment discussion?
Well Jane, I have to bring up something first that I thought I should. Mr. Ross and them had mentioned that they thought that Mr. Heskey's thing would be put on our agenda. I did not make that motion, but I thought I did bring up that I thought Mr. Heskey's thing should have been sent to our attorney for his evaluation of it. And I don't, I'm not sure how that would have fit on the agenda. It's, it's not, I'm not, I didn't ask to put it on the agenda to make a decision, but I did ask it to be sent to the attorney.
Okay.
So we, we did send it to Nathan and I believe he addressed it at the last meeting.
I don't remember him doing that.
Um. Nathan, are you seeing yourself?
It's, I believe it was an executive session, so I don't know how much we talked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. As, as I said in the initial, initial time that this came up, I mean, the commission could take a variety of actions, but there's not been any finding by any ethics commission, and I don't know that that's necessarily required. But it seems to me that given the nature of the allegations, that that might be something that you would want to have considered by that independent body before you, you know, address the allegations that are in this issue. So I, that was my suggestion initially. And I, I think that is still a good suggestion.
Okay, and I'm going to limit conversation on the subject, it's not listed on the agenda, so if we
And that's, that's a good point, Commissioner Tab, and if, you know, if you all want to put it on the agenda for next time, maybe we could discuss it more fully, but.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, and that's the option of any commissioner to put something on the agenda. So, we can, or a citizen can request, submit an agenda request. So, we've got some background noise there.
I don't know what I have to say, but we've been getting these proclamations for every county.
I'm not sure who that is.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. They need to mute themselves, so, oh, maybe that's number three Stacy Horse, so talking about a proclamation. But anyway, let's go back to the question we were working on. Do the commissioners want to set a time certain for our discussion on the text amendments during today's meeting?
Well, I don't really, you know, if, we could set it for eleven o'clock. I mean, it's ten oh seven now and, you know, we have, you know, I don't see anything on here that really should take too much time. And then we have Nathan.
Right.
Take a little bit of time, but I'm not sure about that. But if we can set it for eleven o'clock, maybe that would help, or I don't know if it would help or hinder, but just a suggestion.
No. Yeah. I was thinking of the same time, too. All right. Is that, all right, well, I'll make, I don't know, this just housekeeping thing. We'll just, for the public that's listening, we'll make every effort to start our discussion on the proposed text amendments, agenda item number ten at eleven o'clock. So, I can understand that'll perhaps save everybody a lot of time and they don't want to listen to all our other housekeeping details and so forth. Everybody agreeable with that?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Here, no objections, we'll move right along to item number two, which involves the sheriff.
The commission will be very fast, so you can keep on your agenda. What I'm asking you to do today is to approve the employment of Joshua Weaver as a deputy that is filling a position left vacant when Deputy McCusker went and became a member of the FBI. The position has been vacant now, this will be three months going in, so it has no negative impact on the budget. Actually, it's a little positive impact because we've saved some money not paying him when he was gone. And the new deputy obviously will, will start at, at the minimum salary for a certified deputy. Mr. Weaver is currently a certified officer in West Virginia. He actually is working at the Charles Tunn Police Department. He's done some great work, but his family is from right across the Potomac River in Maryland. So he's, he's sort of local to this area and grew up in this area. So I'm asking that you approve him. He's obviously met the requirements of certification and civil service rules. That his, his, his starting salary would be forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and that his effective date of employment would be as early as October eleventh of this year, pending him meeting the final requests and approvals. He's got to get his medical check to be approved and he's got to also meet his qualifications for shooting. Those are two further requirements he has to meet once he's employed.
Okay.
I'm asking you to approve Deputy Joshua Weaver as a deputy effective October eleventh.
Okay.
Well, I move, I'll make the motion that we approve the hire of Joshua Weaver to the position of Deputy Sheriff at a starting salary of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars with a starting date of October eleventh.
Okay. Motion is before us for the employment of Joshua Weaver. You have any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the hire of Joshua Weaver as a deputy sheriff, starting salary forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars effective October eleventh, two thousand twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Commissioner, thank you very much. We, just to keep you, as I try to do every time, in the last two weeks, we do a weekly report for all law enforcement and fire and EMS. And in the last two week period, there were, this is, this is, this is fun, it turns out to be this, two thousand twenty, so two thousand twenty incidents in law. And among those, one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine, or fifty-nine percent of all calls in Jefferson County were answered and responded to by the sheriff's office. So you're, you're, you're getting your money's worth.
Yes.
Sounds like it.
Okay. Thank you. I believe we're a few minutes early, but Stephanie, is Stacy Horst on the line?
See her name listed here, but that doesn't mean, sometimes when people call in, I can't read them.
Yeah.
Ms. Horst, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay. All righty. Ms. Horst, will you go ahead and explain your request?
Sure, we had sent a request for a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which begins today, October the first. And we had provided a document. Do you want me to read what we had sent over?
Uh, yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Give me just one moment.
Sure.
Okay, I apologize. We had sent something over and I thought that it was going to be read, so I'm just making sure I have the correct here.
Well, the, the copy we have talks about Franklin County, so I don't know.
Yes. We serve Franklin County, so we did some data specific for your county.
Okay, all right.
Did you want to read that?
Well, we'll let you read that. If you have your copy, if not, I can read it here, but I'm wondering if we should substitute Jefferson for Franklin County.
Okay.
I'm happy to read it, Commissioner Tab, I have it right here in front of me.
Okay.
Sometimes I do that for the reservations.
Yeah, now are we clear that this, this organization serves all of West Virginia, or at least covers Jefferson County?
We cover Berkeley County, Jefferson County, and Morgan County in West Virginia.
Oh, okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Cumberland Valley strives to community involvement to make understood the impact of breast cancer and ensure that no one faces breast cancer alone. Whereas BCA CB is celebrating thirty-one years of serving patients of all ages throughout Franklin County in the eastern panhandle of West Virginia and seeks to promote early detection of breast cancer in women and men. Increase awareness of breast cancer and advocate locally for breast cancer causes. Support and assist those affected by breast cancer, celebrate survivors, and raise funds to provide breast cancer programs and services. Whereas BCA CB provides free mammograms for men and women who have little or no insurance and cannot afford to be screened and offers programs to local breast cancer patients and their families to aid in supporting them through their entire breast cancer journey. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the county commissioners of Jefferson, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay.
Jane, I'll, I'll make a motion that the Jefferson County Commission support this proclamation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, I'm pretty aware of this issue and it never hurts to do proclamations and just make the public more aware of what resources may be available for folks. Ms. Horst, can you tell us, do you have a website or a Facebook page? So if somebody needs help or wants to contact you for services, there, there's a point of contact?
Sure. Our website is B C A C V dot org. And we do have a Facebook page, Breast Cancer Awareness Cumberland Valley, where they are able to reach out to us. We have an early detection program as it stated in the proclamation to help pay for mammograms and ultrasounds. And then a full list of programs and services once there's a diagnosis. So, free to reach out to us.
Okay. Commissioners, have any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay.
Thank you again for partnering with us to bring some awareness.
Right, well, I have a friend that was recently diagnosed, so, yeah, it's a tough time for anyone that's received that diagnosis. So we have, do we have the motion to accept this proclamation? Any more?
Oh, okay.
I think Ralph
I've made the motion, yeah.
And you seconded. So the motion is before us. All those in favor of approving this proclamation, this documentation, this proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I dare say we will have the staff create a document on fancy paper and get, you know, some signatures and will probably be mailed to you, so you have that for your records.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for all your hard work on this area of concern.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do.
All right. Have a good day.
Commissioner Tab, we do have another breast cancer proclamation in the agenda, it's number nine.
Yes, I was thinking we could run down to that and take care of that.
Right.
And I will actually present for the CEOS, as where I'm a member. And as we are known, it's a community education outreach service. And it's associated with WVU Extension. We originally, a long time ago, were the farm women, and then we were the homemakers, and now our title and role has expanded. But normally every year, the CEOS can do a pink luncheon as a fundraiser and have sent probably over eighty thousand dollars to this Breast and Cervical Cancer Fund for the state of West Virginia. They can't do that this year, so they're trying to find other ways to not only raise funds, but also to, you know, spread the word that there are other avenues of help for folks that need it for breast and cervical cancer. So I will read the proclamation and then hopefully we'll get a motion on the floor to approve it. And this is for West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October, obviously. The proclamation reads as, "In two thousand twenty, an estimated one thousand four hundred and seventy West Virginia women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately two hundred and ninety women will die from the disease. Breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginia women. A woman has about a one in eight, twelve percent chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and about a one in thirty-eight, which is two point six percent, chance of dying from the disease. Currently, the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. Women age fifty and older should have a mammogram every year. Women ages forty through forty-nine should talk with their healthcare provider about their screening schedule. Clinical breast exams by a physician or nurse are recommended every three years for women in their twenties and thirties and every year for women forty and over. Breast self-exam, BSE, women should be told about the benefits and limitations of BSE. Clinical breast exams, breast self-exams and mammograms can save lives. Women should talk to their healthcare provider about their individual screening schedule. In recognition of the important life-saving early detection practices available for breast cancer, the Jefferson County Commission of Jefferson County do hereby proclaim October first, two thousand twenty as West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day. In October, two thousand twenty, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I urge all Jefferson County women to become aware that they are at risk for developing breast cancer and to discuss screening with their healthcare providers." So I'll make the motion that we endorse this proclamation for West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor of adopting or endorsing this proclamation for breast cancer awareness, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, thank you very much. So we will do the same thing, probably make it, put it on fancy paper and get it to the group for their records. Next I have, let's see, I don't know what time it is here. 10:22 is Michelle Gordon online? Or should we find something else to do?
I think she's here, she's here.
Okay. Aye, Michelle. And, oh, this is the ambulance fee appeal, so I guess we also need, we also need Mr. Ross on the line?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, alright. I don't see your face, so I can't tell, yeah. Alright, well, Michelle, explain what's going on here and we'll give Mr. Ross an opportunity to explain his side of things and we'll go from there.
For fiscal year '21, we did perform an audit of the bills that went out for ambulance fee billing. We compared that very closely to the assessor's data that she provides to us. And his property came up as having a two-family unit. And he was sent a bill for his primary residence as well as a secondary unit that he has. When he mentioned that, he indicated that the secondary unit is a guest house above his garage, or that garage was renovated into a guest house and is occupied by his daughter. So unfortunately, I did not have the ability to waive that. And I just wanted to provide you some additional background that other citizens have contacted us regarding their second residential units that are being utilized by either adult children or other relatives and no other, I have not been able to exonerate any of those bills because they all qualify as residential units based on the actual ambulance fee ordinance. And I did provide you with some relevant definitions that are included in the ambulance fee ordinance. An accessory structure is defined as any separate structure associated with a residential unit such as a garage, storage shed, workshop, or otherwise located on the same parcel that is
addressable.
residential unit, as long as it's not actually used as a residential unit. Residential unit is defined as any habitable structure intended for residential use, whether occupied or unoccupied, including but not limited to single-family homes, duplexes, vacation, secondary homes, mobile homes, apartments, condominiums, and rental units. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to waive that portion of the bill for him. And I did advise him that he could appeal to the commission. And that's what he's here to do today, and I wanted to give him time to explain or plead his case.
Okay, does anyone right now have questions for Michelle? And then we will have Mr. Ross speak.
I do have a question. I did read Mr. Ross's letter, and he mentioned that there was a prior hearing a year ago, maybe two years ago. Do you know anything about that, Michelle?
I don't, he indicated that it was actually back in 2016, I believe is what he had said. But we should, we should not be providing permanent exonerations for residential purpose. This is an actual residential unit. Just because it's occupied or unoccupied or not being used as a residential unit today, doesn't mean that the new owner or next year they may not rent it. And he's clearly using it as a residential unit. So I am not aware of when it was exonerated or if it was exonerated. I just know that it is a residential unit at this point.
Okay. Commissioners, excuse me, any other commissioners have questions for Michelle?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of how we, so this doesn't require the res, I mean, I assume the residential unit has, you know, a kitchen and a bathroom, it's a standalone. Well, I'll ask Mr. Ross those things, so, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Mr. Ross.
Yeah. Okay, alright, go ahead.
I can give you, clear up some of the history. When we first received the bill back in 2014, it was for, for both residences. And I wrote, at that time, the bill came with a, if I remember, I don't have what I sent six years ago, but it had about how to appeal it. So I wrote a letter at that time explaining why I thought it should only be counted as one. And I also pointed out some inconsistencies in the actual, the fee ordinance. And I've never been billed for the second one since. I've never paid for the second one since. So a key thing here is that since 2014, I've never been billed for the second one. And now I, now I am with no explanation. There was nothing like, like this, you know, I just sent a letter in and, and I never paid the second one and I was never billed for the second one until this year. The two things I'd like to point out in the ordinance, the definition of a residential unit, Ms. Gordon did not read the entire thing. "In the case of a structure which contains multiple independent addressable dwelling units such as duplexes and apartments, each addressable unit shall be deemed to be a separate residential unit." So the house that we have is not a separate addressable unit. It's all under 1853 Flowing Springs Road. And then on the first part, under definitions, when it's talking about an accessory structure, it says, "The burden is upon the owner to do a structure that is not commercial or residential", which to me, this is requiring a person to prove a negative, which can't really be done. So that was the basis of the letter that I sent in 2014. The effect was, I was never been assessed a second fee, okay? So as it stands now, we have, and you're right, Ms. Tab, it has a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom, a bedroom, okay? It's a pretty nice little place, Mara enjoys it. We consider it a fifth bedroom, basically. If she wasn't there, she would be in the house. We don't rent it out. The only, the ironic thing is, the only time that we've used the ambulance is when my brother was visiting us. He stayed in the main house, he didn't want to stay on the guest house. And coming down the stairs of the main house, he fell and broke his ankle. And of course, we had to call the ambulance. If he'd have stayed in the guest house, we'd never needed, we'd never needed the ambulance. So the point is, if somebody's living in, sleeping in a tent in our yard, or if they're in the guest house, or if they're in the main house, it doesn't really matter. The ambulance is going to be called for, called for them. So I don't really, I think there's some confusion about the definitions of exactly if it should be counted as a, as a separate one. It's not a separate addressable, it's all part of this. We consider it to be a, a fifth bedroom. And we haven't paid it for six years and we were not notified, oh, that there, there has been a change. So that's my case. I don't want to take up much more of your time.
Okay.
Okay, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things that if this building were rented out, he would most definitely give it a separate residential unit, either apartment A or garage. It would, it would definitely have a separate residential unit. It is clearly a residential unit. And the ordinance specifically says that whether it's occupied or unoccupied, it is still considered a residential unit.
Separate.
And as far as it not being billed since 2014, unfortunately, our old system was flawed in that if someone received a waiver for their bill one year, it permanently exonerated them in error. The new system has fixed that flaw that was in the old system and properties are no longer permanently exonerated. And it will not be permanently exonerated in the future.
So would one need to reapply every year for this?
It would, it would need to be reassessed every year. It is most definitely a separate residential unit, although you have family in it. This year, it is still considered a second residential unit.
Okay.
Even though it's not separately addressable, okay.
Alright. Commissioners, do you have questions of either Ms. Gordon or Mr. Ross?
This is Commissioner Compton. I understand where Michelle's coming from on this and I agree with her. I, just from my standpoint, I'm willing to exonerate this with the knowledge going forward that it will be in effect. But that's just where I'm coming from.
So a one-time exoneration?
Yes, just because there is some, obviously, issues with the old system and the new system and a miscommunication. But going forward, it would be in effect from my standpoint.
How can you do that? I'm sorry.
Alright, other commissioners?
Yeah, I have, I have something to say about that. I feel like, you know, we're granting an exception to something that if everyone else came in that had the same situation, we would also, if we set a precedent here, I think we would be in trouble. And I certainly understand Mr. Ross's concern and I'm, and I'm sure that, you know, I know that not having had to pay it, you know, since 2014, he was surprised when he got the bill. But it doesn't alleviate the fact that it is a residential unit. It's no longer a garage. And I think the ordinance is clear that it does have to be paid and that we did, through the audit and through the new system, catch the error. I just don't feel that we can exonerate it because I think that, you know, it's going to set a precedent for other requests made for the same reason. So that's where I'm coming from.
Other comments from Commissioner, our discussion, or somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I have one more thing here. I mean, his address is just one address. I mean, it's being taxed at the assessor's office as a singular address. That garage is not a separate address, correct?
She has it as a separate card.
Go ahead, same address.
So, do they have two separate tax bills for the two different entities?
It's two separate cards. She has a card for each building on the property. And that's how it was, she also has it indicated that it is a two-family dwelling.
Well, that's incorrect.
Alright, I mean, we have to look at the ordinance in my eyes. This sounds kind of a, there might be an issue here. I understand where Michelle's coming from on this, but I mean, I have some problems with the ordinance as written pertaining to this case and maybe some others.
Well, I, I see, you know, I think the ordinance is pretty clear. And, you know, it's unfortunate that the error was made at the start of, you know, ambulance fee collection. But I know we have gone using new software and so forth. And it's pretty clear, any habitable structure, whether occupied or unoccupied. And it doesn't really, you know, technically, I think probably you should have a separate address for emergency response, but that's me. I don't know what's required on the addressing ordinance, and I'm not going to get into that for today's discussion. But I think it's going to be very difficult to grant a one-year exoneration because I think we'll have lots of other folks coming in for the same reason, wanting at least a one-year exoneration. And I hate to set that precedence also. But I know it was a surprise to get the additional invoice for the other structure, so.
Jane, I'm probably going to do something I normally don't. I'm going to probably agree with Josh on this.
Can you say that again?
It's being over.
It was a surprise this year, but it was a surprise based on something that 2016, the county commission did and let continue for many years. I think we, I'm not sure what the obligation is of notice and things, but I, I think, yeah, notice for next year. Kim, you're going to have to pay the bill, but this year I don't, I, I think it should have exoneration for the one year.
And I do want to point out that I'm not sure what the West Virginia statute of limitations is, but we, legally speaking, we could go back and bill for the last few years. We did not bill in error. I just wanted to point that out, and Stephanie can probably speak to the West Virginia statute of limitations regarding that.
And I think that's the difference.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what the law is, that's all.
I think the law has many nuances here.
Is that a motion, Ralph?
I'll make the motion.
I'll hold that.
So the motion, the motion, Ralph, is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the motion is to grant this one-year exoneration for the additional residence. But going forward, there will be invoicing for two residents, is that correct?
Correct.
Thing before you do that?
Wait a minute, Mr. Ross, we have a motion on the floor and commissioners are discussing. And if we have questions, we will ask you, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners about the motion, or if you need further details from Mr. Ross?
I just have one quick thing. Would Commissioner Lauren Zetti consider amending his motion to include not back billing Mr. Ross for this?
I would.
Are you saying not back billing? I didn't understand it. It sounded like back, backfilling to me.
I think that's what it was, misordinated indication that the county could ask for all payments for, since 2016.
I'm concerned about that because we have a number of accounts that perhaps were billed incorrectly or did not receive a bill at all, and I don't want to set a precedent of exonerating all of our bills.
I've made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I'm going to try to restate the motion again. And you correct me if I don't get it right, Ralph. The motion is to exonerate all past bills for Mr. Ross's account for this additional residence for, including this year, going back to the start of ambulance fees. Is that correct, Ralph?
In general terms, yes.
Okay, yeah, I may not have said it very elegantly, but I'm trying to make it clear. Any more discussion or comments? Well, you know, I think it's a sticky wicket and I'm not going to go to exonerating past years. I think the ordinance is pretty clear. But, you know, it's an unfortunate error in our system and we're, we've got it fixed. But we need to move forward and make it right. Okay, now, I have a question. So if we vote for this, this does set a precedent that others that we are trying to collect back late-paid ambulance fees, they would also have an example of other exoner, of an exoneration of fees not paid for several years that they were correctly billed for. That's what I want to make the, sure there's a difference.
I guess the question is, were they correctly billed for? I guess they were just not billed in Mr. Ross's case for that second structure.
There are some that were not billed, there are some who were billed incorrectly that the audit did.
Okay.
So we switched to the new Tyler system for billing, so that we're not paying for, kind of trying to get everything on the same system. And when we did that, it reads the assessor's data better than our old system did. And so the assessor has a land use code of 102, which indicates two living units under one address. And sometimes that's incorrect, sometimes it's incorrectly coded as that, and sometimes it's correct. So we've been, not we, Michelle, has been spending a lot of time. So we've been, not we, Michelle has been spending a lot of time researching people who have said, well, it's never billed for this before, or that's not true. So we have to go back and like double-check the assessor's data to make sure that it is or is not true. But there are people who are getting bills that they had never gotten before, when they should have gotten those bills because of the way the old system was reading the data. And that's true, not just for this. It's true for apartments. We've had apartments who were not, all those units were supposed to be billed individually. They were not. So the new system is picking up some of the old, you know, the errors of the old system consistently promulgated every year. And I think it is true, an exoneration, just like an exoneration for taxes, just like a home set exemption, just like farm use, is something that you have to apply for every year. And it shouldn't be the, it should not be any, our procedure shouldn't be any different for the ambulance fee because those uses can change with new owners. So I just wanted to kind of give you the background of what's going on. We've been fielding lots of calls from people who have gotten bills that they didn't get before. There are a lot of people who are in that land use code 102, who have like a garage apartment or something like that. And when it's on a separate card, the assessor is indicating that that's a separate residential unit, but not separately, but it's not addressed separately. So it's on the same. So I just kind of wanted to give you the background.
Okay, well, we have.
There are lots of people that fall into this category.
But that's.
I also wanted to point out that, that even though it does not have a separate address, it is still a separate addressable unit.
Yes.
So it's.
I'm, I'm going to make a comment here. My basis of this motion is, in 2016, he did get a bill on that property. He did appeal it. It was exonerated, and we did not bill him for the next few years. I, I think that's different than what you're talking about, and I'm going to stick with my motion.
I have one last amendment, too. So the fact that certain individuals were not sent a bill is not their fault. It's the county's incompetence or the system's incompetence that's the issue. So that's why I'll support the motion.
Okay. Well, I definitely, definitely see both sides of this argument. And the other issue, not for discussion today, but maybe we need to come up with a policy that things that have been overlooked because of the old system, and now people are getting bills and then will possibly be billed for, you know, the years they missed payment because they were never billed, that can get into a pretty big chunk of change for some folks. So that's another item I think we need to examine and put on the agenda to decide a policy on how to approach that. Because I didn't realize it was such a large issue, or it has the potential to be a large issue. So we can discuss that in more depth.
Well, I do want to make a comment. I think using the word incompetent is not fair. I think that, I think that's a horrible use of, of terms. And it was through no incompetence. It was through an error. And we all make mistakes, and I would defy anybody on this board to, to show that they've never made a mistake before. And it wasn't a mistake, it wasn't human error. It was a technological error. So, you know, I take exception to that, and I think that was a horrible thing to say. And I would never, I would never accuse our staff of being incompetent because I think we all know better.
Okay, Commissioner Nolan, you clearly misunderstood what I said. I was not.
I heard you clearly, Josh.
You did not, because what I said was the incompetence of a system, which was an outdated system, hence why we replaced it. What I mentioned had nothing to do with staff, so I don't appreciate that comment on your part.
Well, you didn't say specifically.
Go play the tape back.
You said it was due to incompetence, and that's what you said. So if that's not what you meant, then just say that's not what you meant.
Well, you're misinterpreting my communication and putting your own spin on it.
So a question?
No, I did not.
I heard the Commissioner Hudson said to call the question. So I'm going to attempt to repeat the motion. And Ralph, you correct me if I don't have the details just right, or would you like to repeat the motion?
I'll let you.
I just have one, one recommendation. Could we address the old bills together with all of the other old bills and not just his old bills, exonerate all of his old?
I think the question has been called, Michelle, and I think you have to let the call, the motion go.
You're right. Okay. Let's see, the motion before us is to approve exonerations for the additional residence at the Ross address for this year and all previous years, that it was not charged. Is that correct, Ralph?
That's correct, but I think, I think I had in the thing that it would be charged in future years.
Okay, right, yeah. I assumed that, but you're right, that the exoneration would include this year and past years. But moving forward, the additional residence would be charged in ambulance fee. Everybody on board with that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion is three to two, and the motion carries. It was Commissioner Tab and Nolan that voted in the negative.
I was a negative, Jane.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I said neg.
I thought I heard Caleb, yeah.
Okay, so the motion fails, three to two, with Commissioner Lauren Zetti and Compton saying aye, and Tab, Nolan, and Hudson opposing. Okay, all right, so the motion fails. And if you don't mind, I would like to ask Michelle to, and maybe we need to put this on the agenda, or perhaps, perhaps you can put that on the agenda exactly. We can come up with a policy approach on issues like this that may arise. Everybody okay with examining this at a, instead of an individual case, a policy for instances like this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Ross, for your time. And I think we've had a good discussion, and we have some more work to do, so.
Well, you're, you're welcome. And yeah, I didn't realize I was going to get this heated. Yeah, but I do, you should look at the rewriting of the ordinance, but I'm still unclear right here. Am I going to get billed for the last however many years it was? Because I am still within the statute of limitations here. And now she is aware of it, so.
Right, well.
That, that's something that should be part of your, your, your policy.
That's correct.
We'll debate that policy.
Yeah, we'll debate, we'll work on that and hopefully have it more clarity for everyone involved.
All right, thank you all.
All right, have a good day.
You too. I'll stick around to the other stuff.
Okay. Um, let's see, let's see, we're at around 10:50. Is Mr. Goodwin on the line? Can we get the, I think these are pretty straightforward, and we can get this done before 11 o'clock?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I have two bond releases. The first one's a complete release of $345,226 from the construction bond amount for Primax Construction, Inc. It's the Advanced Auto Parts Store Planning Commission File Number S15-03. This project is located at 890 East Washington Street at its intersection with Euclid Avenue. The work's 100% complete.
Okay.
And recommended motion number one is the one that goes with this one.
Yeah.
I'll move that we authorize a complete release of the construction bond number 018039136 with the insurance company, South Carolina. Boy, there's a lot of background noise.
Yeah, somebody needs to mute.
Yeah, in the amount of $343,226, construction amount for the Primax Construction, Inc. Advanced Auto Part Files, number S15-03.
Um, somebody needs to mute their microphone. We're getting a lot of background.
I'm looking to see who it is, and I don't see anyone. I mean, all of our speakers are unmuted, but everyone else looks to be muted.
Okay, well, it's cleared up now, so that's good. Sounded to me like papers being turned, but, you know, who knows? Have a motion in a second to, for a complete release of a performance bond, number 018039136. We have any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item, Roger.
Okay, the next one is a complete release of $4,464,221 from the construction bond for Magnolia West Virginia LLC. Subdivision Phase One, file number 18-05. The original construction bond is being re-secured in this, now by D.R. Horton, Inc. With Mon Insurance Company, performance bond number LICX1195988. This project's located at the end of Belvedere Farm Court in Euclid Avenue. All site work needs to be completely done to the construction bond by D.R. Horton, Inc.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering where that was. So I know at the end of Euclid Avenue, yeah, there was something going on down there. Well, I'll make the motion, I'm unmuted. I'll make the motion that we authorize a complete release of performance bond number 0763071 with International Fidelity Insurance Company, Newark, New Jersey, in the amount of $44,446,221, construction bond amount for Magnolia West Virginia LLC, Magnolia Springs subdivision, Phase One, file number 18-05.
So I'll second the motion, but I have a question, Roger. So are they, are they going to substitute this bond for another? Is that what, is that what I understood?
My understanding is that it's a new, new owner. And so therefore, we're releasing the bond that the original owner had. And, and D.R. Horton is putting in their own bond in place of it.
It's already secured.
It's already secured. We have the bond, the bond agreement, et cetera.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we're just needing to release the original bond, which we no longer need.
Okay, all right, that clears it up for me. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the complete release of a performance bond, number 0763071, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I believe that vote was unanimous. If not, please correct me. All right, anything else, Roger?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
It's a few minutes before 11:00. So I suggest commissioners take a short break, and we'll come back on at 11:00 and start our discussion on item number 10, the proposed text amendments. Uh, Josh and Caleb, are you back online?
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here, Jane.
Okay. Uh, I assume we need Stephanie to turn us back on, uh, as far as recording.
I can turn it off, I just left it on since it was such a short break.
Okay, so we recorded some dead air. That's okay.
We can take it out when we, um-
Oh, no problem.
Upload it.
Okay, so we have a, an agenda item on the, uh, county zoning and land development ordinance, which, uh, pertains to solar energy facilities. Do, we wanna, um, start with, uh, maybe a brief overview from Alex. Uh, is that all right with other commissioners? Or, and if you have any questions for her?
Fine with me. Sorry.
Good with me, yep.
Okay, the floors is, the floors. The floor is yours, Alex.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I was just gonna go over a couple of the key comments that were received. Um, I'll trust that you've received all of the written comments, um, in your packets and had the opportunity to review them. Um, one thing I do want to clarify is that, um, whether the process remains as a concept plan or if the use is changed to a conditional use, there is a public process. Um, I saw some comments saying that there needed to be a public comment or a public process incorporated into the requirements, and I just wanted to make sure that it is understood. If it remains as a concept plan, there's still a public workshop. Um, that puts the public on notice of a project and provides them the opportunity to submit comments related to the public. Now, there is a distinct difference between the concept plan process and the conditional use permit process. Concept plan is a workshop that goes to the planning commission. Public comments can be made and the developer can proffer, um, to accommodate some of the comments that are submitted. But the planning commission's role is just to basically evaluate the proposal to determine that it's, uh, complies with the requirements. Um, and they can, if the developer agrees to comments that are made, um, then they'll place that as a condition of approval, but they're not required to make those conditions of approval. The conditional use permit process is a public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals, so it's two separate bodies. And, um, if the commission is inclined to go the direction of changing it from a permitted use to a conditional use, I do think the criteria or some iteration of the criteria that is in there now should remain. Um, so the board has some basis to evaluate these projects and they're not just going at it blindly. Um, so, um, so those were two comments. There were, you know, several comments that said the, the proposal should be changed from a permitted use to conditional. Um, there were also comments related to setbacks and buffer standards that they should be, some of them said that they should be increased. Um, and just to explain, you know, how we came up with 100-foot setback for these panels. Um, a commercial use is generally subject to a 75-foot setback when located adjacent to a property that has a residence. Um, industrial uses are subject to a 200-foot setback. While solar facilities are producing energy, they, um, are very different from industrial uses in that they don't have heavy traffic. They do not generate any kind of noise or odor. Um, the, there's already criteria in there, um, addressing that glare needs to be kept at a minimum. So any kind of lighting needs to comply with what our lighting requirements are. The panels themselves have to be designed in such a way that they don't have any glare. Um, so, the 100-foot setback was basically a happy medium in between those standards. So that's where that came from. It would be up to the commission's discretion whether or not they think that should be increased. Um, similar to, um, the accessory components, there was a comment that it should be increased from 25 feet to 50 feet. That's, again, up to your discretion. Vegetative buffers, there was a similar comment that it should be increased to a 50-foot wide vegetative buffer along all property lines. Um-
Alex, can I-
Yes, sir.
Just a technical question on the buffer.
Yeah.
Is the, I think they're talking about a 10-foot fence. Is that the fence on the roadside of the buffer or on the solar side of the buffer?
Well, the fencing, um, is around the whole facility. They put the, that's a standard industry practice to put up a security fence. The buffer, um, comes into play, and I'm happy to share my screen if, if that's available. I can put that example-
Let me say why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
Jane had made a comment about having a animal way or, or whatever.
Wildlife corridor.
If, if the buffer can serve at that, but if the fence is on the outside, it can't do that. That's why I was asking it.
Okay, yeah.
Can you see my screen? I'm never sure. I have two monitors. Okay, so if I move it, probably not. Over here was better?
Yeah, we've got the, uh-
Yeah, that's big.
CTA 19-dash, it's a picture.
So that's the same example that I used a while ago, just to kind of give you a visual. Again, we don't have a lot of rectangle parcels in the county, um, so this is very, very, very simplified. But, uh, you know, the panels are required to be 100 feet from all property lines regardless of whether there's a house. Um, so if it's a vacant parcel next to them, it still has to be 100 feet from that property line. The buffer requirements come into play when the panels are within 200 feet of an existing residence. So the example I had on here for you was just showing, uh, parcel one. The panels were within 200 feet of the residence on the, on parcel one. Um, so they were, in this example, required to place the, um, 20-foot vegetative buffer along this property line. And then on this parcel here, the panels were, they exceeded the 200-foot requirement from a residence. So there's no buffer on this side. That's how the regulations are currently written. Again, you know, all of these standards can be evaluated and, um, changed at the commission's discretion. But that is what's in there right now. Um, Commissioner Lorenzetti just brought up the, uh, wildlife corridor. Um, I understand the concept behind it. I just don't know exactly how it would be implemented. Um, I think a lot of times the type of fencing, so if an opaque fence were installed, for example, in lieu of a vegetative buffer, um, I could see that being inhibitive of wildlife passage. Um, I think some fencing styles are, um, more of like the chain link design and they can be, they can have larger openings in them to allow small animals like fox or, um, obviously birds can fly, they can, um, so they would be allowed to go in and, and then there's the vegetative cover requirement, which would, um, support wildlife habitat. Um, if there's a corridor in place, um, I don't know if it would have to take into consideration what uses are on the adjoining property, because if you're redirecting deer to another farm, they're obviously gonna have a deer fence up protecting their crops. Um, if it's directing deer to a residential lot, I don't know if that's, um, actually protecting wildlife. You know, they're not, they're just being directed to a property that doesn't have a lot of vegetation, um, to support that. So that's just something to consider, um, when, if, if this is something that you guys are considering incorporating. Um, another comment, yes?
Sorry, Alex, I, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
You, you know, um, and I just proposed the wildlife corridor because I can see some issues with mainly the deer population. But, you know, you said that, uh, uh, an adjacent crop field would up, would have a deer fence up. That's not necessarily true. Not all of our property is fenced. Uh, it's an expensive proposition, but, uh, it has been beneficial. But, you know, I'm just, it was just an idea. Idea I proposed and, um, I, I can see that it would, if it is a good fence around the solar panels, then, um, it would put pressure on surrounding, uh, properties, whether you have a wildlife corridor or not, um, as far as, uh, deer damage and more possums, raccoons, foxes and so forth. So, you know, I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. And I just wanted to point out, it, the, that was a comment received and, and written comments as well. So it wasn't just, um, from your comment last time. Um, the environmental impact assessment, you know, I don't know if there's specific criteria that should be evaluated as part of that. Um, the stormwater, the stormwater management ordinance has, um, criteria to address erosion and sediment. Um, if wildlife habitat is a concern, perhaps that could be a specific criteria that's put in there that, you know, wildlife habitat be assessed for that proposed location. Um, and again, you know, part of the stormwater management requirements, as well as what's in the zoning ordinance, is that, um, vegetative, a vegetative cover be maintained on that property. Uh, so that'll hopefully support, um, bird migration, um, and pollinators. Um, the decommissioning of solar facilities, there was comments that that should be the county's responsibility. Um, that's a huge financial burden, obviously, uh, to the county and not typical of most projects. Um, so, you know, again, that's gonna be the county commission's discretion. Uh, there are requirements in there about posting surety and, um, there will be an internal policy with guidelines as to what that decommissioning plan would entail. Um, there were comments pertaining to limiting the size, and I know that kind of came up during the last meeting. Um, again, that's, you know, the county commission's discretion. Uh, right now, there's no minimum or maximum acreage proposal in there. Um, and I just want to, again, clarify, which hopefully the last workshop did clarify this. Um, solar facilities are not exempt from providing stormwater management.
Right.
Um, the language that's in the zoning ordinance was put in there by the engineering department um, to specifically refer applicants to the stormwater management ordinance. And as we discussed during the last meeting, um, the, um, stormwater management ordinance has exceptions. So if you can design your facility in a certain way to comply with the best management practices and show that in the stormwater management report that has to be submitted to the engineer, then a full stormwater management plan doesn't have to be built. Um, so that's what that's saying. If you can't comply with those best management standards that, um, Roger Goodwin reviewed last time, then a full stormwater management plan would be required. Um, and this is, again, just the examples that, um, Roger had pulled out of the American Society of Civil Engineers study that he used as a, as a basis. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions or go over the amendment if you want me to, but, um, I can defer to you guys. I just wanted to highlight a few of the comments that we got several comments pertaining to.
Okay.
Um, Alex, this is Patty, and I, I do have a, a couple of, I guess, things that I want to clarify, uh, based upon some of the comments we've received. Um, and so I just want to be sure that I understand, um, the CUP versus the concept plan. Though it's my understanding that the conditional use permit, um, if that's adopted, then, uh, only conditions, that, that there's, there's more or less no negotiations that can take place under the conditional use permit once the county has adopted, um, the ordinance. I mean, the ordinance, what's in the ordinance is gonna have to be what is gonna be in the conditional use permit, and there's no room for negotiation there. And am I understanding that correctly?
I, um, the board has the discretion to set conditions of approval within, based on public comment and within reason. So that's why I was saying, I think it's important to, to con- to contain some element of these requirements so they have a basis to go off of. And if you can show you're complying with the requirements that the county has set forth, then the board would really be evaluating any special conditions that may arise based on evaluating, um, the actual area, the property, if there's any unique scenarios that they need to take into consideration. So compatibility.
Okay, so, so it would be, um, it would be specific to compatibility of the, the land itself?
Right.
And that, that's where, that's where they would be able to, um, maybe have some negotiations under the conditional use permit? Okay.
I'm reluctant with the word, uh, the term negotiation. There's not, so during a conditional use permit hearing, there are public comments made, um, but there's not usually, it's not an interactive process typically. So public will make their comments, the board will evaluate those comments. Um, the developer first makes their presentation. Um, and then after the public comment period, they have the opportunity to, um, provide a rebuttal. So they can address all the comments that are presented and, um, similar to the concept plan, they can, they can proffer. They can say, you know, based on this comment, we're willing to do X, Y, and Z. Um, and then the board would then determine whether or not the additional criteria was, uh, or additional conditions of approval would be necessary.
Okay, and so, so, um, then under the concept plan, there is my understanding that there is more ability for interaction between the developer and the public. And so if someone comes in and says, "I see this and I see that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna put this within 100 feet of my residence, um, and I want you to double that amount." So they can actually have that conversation and come to an agreement at that point in the concept plan. Would they be able to do the same thing under the CUP?
The format's just a little different. Um, you're correct in saying the concept plan is more interactive. Um, the developer can respond to public comments during the conditional use permit process. Um, but the format has changed since the traditional CUP when we had Lisa and the development review. Um, it's, it's a different format. It's a public hearing, um, with the same criteria that you, you see with typical public hearing application.
Like a three-minute, like a three-minute comment period, basically.
Right, a three-minute comment period. The opportunity to submit written comments. Um, and then the board's evaluating compatibility with the area. Um, so they, you know, the board has more discretion, I think, to set, to require additional criteria or conditions of approval, um, above and beyond than maybe what the planning commission might do during a concept plan. The only difference is we see during the concept plan, because it is more interactive, we see the developer typically making more, um, proffering more to those comments. So saying, uh, those kind of standards, under the concept plan.
Under the concept plan. That, I wanted to be sure I understood that because I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the, our citizens and the public really do understand that there's more opportunity. So I wanted to be clear from my standpoint that that, that that opportunity still exists to be able to, to make changes under the concept plan. And under the CUP, they get three minutes to say what they think and then the board will evaluate those comments and then they move on to a decision.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Roland, could I just point out a couple of things?
Please.
Uh, Alex, as always, does an incredibly good job at presenting these sorts of things. And she's done a good job here. I wanted to expand on a couple of things she said. One primary thing that she alluded to is that under our former zoning ordinance, where you had the LISA system, there were, if I recall correctly, 23 criteria that had to be specifically evaluated and scored and graded by the zoning administrator or a person in the zoning department before a development would be, um, deemed compatible to enter into this, uh, development or, or whatever use that was being presented. Um, and, uh, just as an aside, I was a, a fan of that system because you had definitive criteria that you could address and that sort of thing. But, um, nonetheless, that system is no longer a part of our ordinance. And so the conditional use permit, uh, section now is in, uh, section 6.3. And so the conditional use permit section now is in section 6.3. And as Alex said, it deals primarily with various ways that the board looks at how this particular development, and I say development, not necessarily housing development, but like this entity, this solar farm, how it would be compatible or incompatible with things like the comprehensive plan, the surrounding properties, further development, that kind of thing. They're listed there in section 6.3 of the ordinance. And so it is more of, it, the Board of Zoning Appeals does hear those things and make some determinations on that. But, you know, I agree with Alex that there may be less actual citizen input, less in-depth citizen input in the conditional use permit issue. Because primarily, I think most of the input would be through some kind of comment that the citizens would make. So to me, that's like one of the, one of the biggest issues here that the commission has to determine in crafting this ordinance is, do you want to have conditional uses for a property and, and do the CUP? Or do you want to be able to just go through the concept plan, which, you know, both of them have pluses and minuses? And Alex explained those quite well, I thought. But just, I wanted to make sure that folks did understand that this is different than it used to be is how, as far as how the ordinance works, because there's no longer a LISA system. It's just based on mostly compatibility-related issues. And, you know, there can be a public hearing and things like that. But anyway, that's the main, main thing I wanted to point out so folks were just aware.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I think, you know, I think it's important for people to really understand that. And I'm not sure, this can be so complicated, and I just wanted to be sure that that information was out there as we may enter and, and continue to discuss this today until we make a decision. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, my, my understanding's a little bit different of the process, and Alex or Nathan, you can correct me. What my understanding was, if it's a by right, you know, concept plan-ish, you know, presentation, then the developer has the option to offer proffers to address any public comments. But under conditional use, I believe, if my understanding is correct, the BZA can react to public comments and agree, you know, require the developer to make some adjustment or in response to a public comment, or any other issue that they see that isn't adequate with the proposal. Now, am I right, or have I misunderstood?
Yeah, the BZA can, under the conditional use concept, can establish conditions under which the, the matter would be approved. And that can be based on public comment that they receive through public comment or through a public hearing or whatever. But I think Alex's point was, often in the, in the concept plan, because the developer, and again, I'm using developer loosely, but the developer wants to have their concept plan approved, they, they tend, you know, they can offer proffers and that sort of thing in response to public comments that are received.
Okay.
But under the CUP, the board can establish, you know, conditions for the conditional use permit to be issued.
Right, okay.
And Alex, do you have any further comment on that?
No, I mean, I agree with you. I think, I think what you said is a fair summary.
Okay.
One quick, Alex and Nathan, thanks for that clarification. It's very helpful. Nathan, just a quick thing. I know you mentioned this last meeting, I think. I've had some questions. The planning commission notified and did all their public notifications accurately for their decision, correct?
Are you talking about?
Go ahead.
As far as the, the planning commission's decision, they did all the public notifications, et cetera, correctly and in line with law, correct?
For this text amendment? Yeah.
Okay, I just want to have that reiterated, because it's been brought to my attention numerous times.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's my, you know, understanding. I'm not looking at the timeline right here in front of me, but I don't think it would be in front of you had they not done that.
Okay, thank you.
Fellow, other commissioners have questions for staff? Additional questions? I, speak up. I've got questions. I don't want to hog the time. Anybody else?
Well, let, let me just ask in general, time-wise, for, for a concept plan versus a conditional use plan, are we talking about three months, six months for a project to get through? Or is there much difference in the two of them?
Well, there's 45 days between when a concept plan is submitted to our office and when it gets put on the next available agenda. So, once we get a concept plan application, we have to put it on the planning commission's agenda within 45 days. The conditional use permit is a 30-day process. I mean, there are specific deadlines. The board meets on the fourth Thursday of every month, and we have the posted submission deadlines for all of those, but it's generally within a 30-day process.
Just to clarify, for the planning commission concept plan, it's the first meeting after the 45 days. It's not within 45 days.
Okay.
I think.
Timeframe. There's not much of a timeframe difference within that.
And it's just a very general question about our zoning maps and comprehensive plan, assuming the the area we're talking about becomes maybe 2,000 acres of solar panels, and in certain spots, there's more acreage, of course, than that. Does that change our zoning at all in that location?
I mean, this, the, the proposed text doesn't have anything to do with a change in zoning. So no property would be rezoned. If people make an application to rezone their property, that goes to the county commission for their evaluation as a public hearing. The majority of the locations that have been presented or identified for solar projects would likely not be supported by the comp plan for a rezoning. However, as you recall, when the comp plan was drafted, anybody can apply for a rezoning, and the county commission, based on any kind of economic value, can grant a rezoning. But no, if the land use is approved either through a conditional use or as a by right use, your zoning district, zoning designation on your property is not going to change.
Okay. Josh or Caleb, do you have additional questions for staff?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Alex and Nathan. Nope, not this time.
Okay, I have a few more questions. Stephanie, the map that was created, I don't know if you can put that up on the screen for us to look at. And then, I think, Nathan, I don't know where Nathan is, but I have a question for Nathan. I don't see his smiling face. So if he could get back on, there you are, Nathan. The question I sent yes to you yesterday, and I don't know if you've had time to research it. And my question was, is the, you know, I've been looking on the PJM website where they put out the feasibility studies for proposed projects and so forth. And it's called the PJM Generation Interconnection Agreement. It's my understanding that has to be approved for a solar project to, I guess, market their power on the open market, I guess, for electricity. Is that a require, I mean, do they require a building permit to, for the final approval of the feasibility study? Or could we require that they have an agreement to market the power before we get into all the minutia of approving a solar facility? I want to know what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do they have, to have the marketing agreement first? Can we require that before we go into the land use part of it? It's just something I've really been wondering about.
Yeah, as far as my response, Commissioner Tab, I would have to look at that. I, I, that's just not in an area of law that I deal with. So I'd be happy to look at it and, and get back with you on that.
Yeah, I just, I just thought, a, and, and land use application wouldn't have much merit or viability if they don't have the approval, you know, to market the electricity. But on the other hand, maybe that's a requirement to get the approval.
Typically, yeah, and, and I think, you know, how this usually works is there has to, with, with a variety of these things, is in order for them to get approval from the state agency, they have to have their ducks in a row. So I would think that part of having their ducks in a row would be having, you know, a property that they could show. With this, there is like a definite distance, you know, from certain points along the electric line and all those kind of things that would probably have to be approved in order for the state to approve their, you know, their entire project. And so I don't know how they could seek that approval if they didn't have a place that they were going to do it and that kind of thing. And, and have zoning approval and that kind of thing. So, but, but I do not know that for sure. I'm just saying how a lot of these projects typically work.
Well, the four projects that are listed on the website now, two of them have maps. And I have found out, you know, that, that show you the location and the layouts of the solar arrays. But they don't, two of them don't. And I have since found out that, you know, they've only gone through like step one, and there's multiple steps. So I just wondered, you know, about that.
Jane, can I say something?
Sure.
Well, I, I don't know the specifics like Nathan was saying, but a, a similar example would be cell towers. We have people identify locations for cell towers and go through our approval of a concept plan, and then the cell tower never happens because of something at a, a higher state or federal level. But they have to have a location that they're proposing, and the, those agencies need to know that it's permitted on that location before they'll even proceed. So it might be like that. It is sort of like, you know, which comes first? I don't know exactly, but.
And that's, that's essentially what I was trying to say, but I think Jenny said it better.
Okay, and then, so, we don't know, but it's, they seem to go hand in hand, really, before they would move forward. And then Nathan, you just discussed before that you wanted decommissioning plan or requirements to be a separate document with the company, I guess, bonding, because, you know, that may need to be changed over the years, you know. But I am very reluctant to make any part of this possible, approve these text amendments in any shape or form without seeing that document. I mean, I think they, they, maybe we can't legally join them, but I think it would be irresponsible of us to approve a text amendment without seeing the bonding and decommissioning requirements. So, I mean, when will we see those?
You can do that any way that you want to do it. I chose not to create that yet, because I did not know if we were going to approve this ordinance. And I just, I thought that it would be best served as a standalone document that could be adapted in the future to different, different bonding needs and that kind of thing without having to do a whole new ordinance amendment. Because it seems to me like that would be, you know, very burdensome to the commission to, if there was a, a particular dollar amount in the bonding requirement or some other thing that might need to be changed because of bonding companies' requests that, that it would have to be gone through the same process as an, as an ordinance requirement. We could always bring those changes back before the commission and get them approved, but it's not as onerous as, as changing the ordinance.
Well, would we be able to, if we move forward in any shape or form on a text amendment, to require that it could not be enacted until the county commission approves the bonding document and decommissioning plan?
I, I mean, I think the better thing to do would just be to wait and, and get the bonding document, you know, presented to you. Truthfully, I think that would probably be the better process. But I, I mean, I think that the alternative process and what we're contemplating here is that the commission move forward with the solar amendment, if that's the commission's pleasure. I'm not advocating it. I'm just saying, if that's what the commission decides to do. And then we do a decommissioning plan, and we can bring that back before the commission to, you know, for further approval as far as the bonding stuff goes.
Okay. I see Roger's face there, and this is sort of his department too, as far as, you know, keeping track of bonding and all that good stuff. Do you have any comments, Roger?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to point out, we didn't do, we didn't do a decommissioning bonding policy, because it's a lot of work. And we have other things that we could focus on. Instead of doing that, not, not knowing for sure whether or not this thing was going to get adopted, we would wait. Our current bonding policy is outside of the ordinance. The ordinance essentially says that you'll, you'll post a bond. And then we, the county commission has a policy, and I, so we'd have to develop a separate policy for decommissioning. And I just wanted to let you know that our current bonding policy, because there's three different scenarios for bonding a project, and you've got all the, the language in there on what the developer and owner are required to do, the guidelines, you've got all the different agreements and forms, it's a 46-page document.
Right.
And so that would be one of the templates we would use, start with. And then Alex just emailed me yesterday some decommissioning information that another jurisdiction has on bonding. So we'd have to do some research on that and look at some others also, and then put it all together and make a recommendation as to how we think decommission, bonding for decommissioning should be done in Jefferson County.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's not something I think that we would have ready next week.
No, and I understand that, that, that's a complex issue, and a lot of research and homework needs to be done on it.
And for all of those reasons, you know, that's why, you know, I have not done it yet. Because I think it would be premature to, to do all of that, and then the solar amendment be rejected. But I would point out, just for, for, you know, comfort of the members of the general public, the bonding and all of that are serious documents. I mean, it's not just something that's just like a pretend. It, they're serious documents that It, they're serious documents that require, you know, actual commitments. And I don't anticipate that this one would be any different.
Okay. And it's, so it's my understanding within our general ordinance, ordinances, that there is a, a requirement for bonding. And that, you know, if we move forward in any form, that on these text amendments, a decommissioning bonding document will be created. I mean, it's already, already in a, a general requirement of our ordinances.
Yes, uh, that's, that's what is contemplated under the current, um, ordinance proposal or draft. And, um, you know, when I say it's not going to be any different, I don't mean it will be the exact same language. I just, I'm just saying it'll be a serious document, you know? I just, I don't want to be misunderstood on that. But it would have to be adapted to this particular use.
Right, right, okay. All right, well, I'm, I'm, uh, feel reassured then. I understand now why we haven't seen a specific document on decommissioning and bonding. Um, and just if the public can see the map that's in my fellow commissioners, that's on our screen. I was very interested in the power lines. And of course, that's the kind of orange ready, or I think it's orange or red that's on the map. The dark green is prime farmland. And so they put a little bit of overlay so you could look at some of the, some of the locations. So I just want you to realize what the potential for impact is. And so I'm, would like my commissioners to know, I'm very concerned about the proposal. I, um, you know, I am going to look for conditional use as a condition of approving text amendment. Uh, also, I will not be, uh, do not want to include the, uh, what is it called? The rural residential growth area. Some of my research came across where one town allowed solar near its one border and the first, you know, the first, um, the first, uh, group, the first project, and then others tagged on to it. And they ended up almost encircling the town and taking up all the residential growth area. So.
What town was that?
I, I know it was in Virginia and I can't remember which town it was. I want to say Edinburgh, but I'm not sure that's right.
Okay.
So, um, and I, I do think another reason to do conditional use, you can adjust it, I think, more easily to, uh, the location because it can be pretty much all over the county. And those particular instances of, you know, historic homes, perhaps wetlands and environmental concerns, uh, we can require the developers to do a little more. And, uh, you know, I, it's just, uh, when you look at those transmission lines and, you know, I think I can't hardly see it on my screen, but the little blue dots show where the substations are. But you also know that companies can, you know, put more money into it and create their own substation in order to link up better with the electrical grid. It's a sizable amount of land that could be impacted. And I, uh, implore my fellow commissioners to advance through this any shape or form in a very cautious manner. It looks like in the past, many jurisdictions have learned from their mistakes. And, uh, I want to be as cautious as possible, but still allow solar facilities under the conditional use permit.
This is Commissioner Compton. I just, Commissioner Tab's point, I, I agree with me to tread lightly on this issue. I've been across the entire country in counties just like Jefferson and seen these solar facilities. And yeah, there has been instances at times, there's been a problem. The large majority of ones I have seen, there is not that problem. And it coincides with the land use very well. So, and there are other stipulations as far as where substations are, topography, et cetera. I mean, I'd like to see another map following these transmission lines. How hilly are those areas and so forth? So I just want residents to understand, just because you see a red line doesn't mean every single centimeter or inch of that red line on this map is going to have, or could even have, a solar facility on it.
Now, that, that's absolutely true. But I want you to realize too, that usually if it's prime farmland, it's relatively flat. So that's one component. And then there's, uh, I think the one of statewide importance. I can't see all of the, you know, the, the legend here on the other side. And now I'm not saying that, um, it's all going over, um, that, you know, the whole line can be covered, but in theory it possibly could. But, you know, um, we don't know whether there will be land disturbance or not, that can make some of those hills rather flat. But, you know, you're right, it, it's not going to go everywhere or be economical, but it does encompass a lot of territory.
Yeah, and also, I'm not an engineer, clearly. We heard from engineers and we don't know for sure how much excess capacity is on those transmission lines. But I'm just going to guess, there is no possible way you could build solar farms along that entire stretch of transmission line and have available capacity on that line. It's just not going to happen. So I, I still think there are no strategic points on that line where this can occur and where I've seen it occur across the country. So.
Well, point taken. Sorry to interrupt. Point taken, you know, that's not what I'm saying is going to happen. I just want everyone to see the possibilities. And this, you know, will go beyond my lifetime. So, uh, I want to tread carefully.
Well, let me just say my, my two cents too. I, I think I made it clear the last time that I, I don't oppose solar, but I would like to see it be more a supplement to the farmers in that area. I talked about, you know, 20% of, of the acreage could be solar and whatever. I, I know Josh accused me of being a machinite or a Bolshevik or socialist or something. But I, I know solar is going to come. I think solar is necessary for some of the farmers to survive. I just don't, at this point, see that the two companies involved want to do 500 to 800 acres in each of their situations. I don't think that helps the small farmer, a 500-acre farmer who wants to use 100 acres to, uh, save their farm. Now, saying that, I do want to say I probably would support conditional use rather than the other system. I do think decommissioning is very important because when I read about North Carolina, they did their statutes, they got sort of overwhelmed with the number of applications for solar farms and then realized they didn't really have a good decommissioning thing. And they've, have tried to rewrite their, their system to try to get future situations so that decommissioning would be taken care of. You know, of course, we're talking about 15 years ahead of time for that, but it, it will be a problem for the next generation. And with that, I'll let, uh, Caleb or Patty speak.
Caleb, you want to go first? Okay. I'm sorry, Caleb, I couldn't hear you.
No, I said ladies first.
Well, whatever we do, we have to do it right. This, this takes, um, this takes a lot of information and a lot of knowledge. And the thing that I want to be sure of is, I would, I would frankly prefer the CUP. But if we go the CUP route, we have to be sure that we get the ordinance amendments right. We have to be sure that, that everything in there is, because there, I mean, I, I understand that there could be some, uh, changes made at the CUP level based upon the three minutes that the public gets to comment on those things. And so we would have to get it right the first time, you know, to, to move forward with this. You know, under the concept plan, you know, if we do the concept plan, you know, my concern, I have, I have greater concerns because I think that, I think there need to be, some things need to be expanded. I think like the setbacks, other things need to be limited, limited, I think, like, um, the amount of land dedicated to be able to do this. I don't want to see solar panels all over, um, the county. I think that they serve a great purpose. I'm not saying that I don't appreciate or support, uh, solar energy because I do. I'm, at this point in time, uh, you know, unless we get the, unless we get the, unless we get the ordinance, uh, the specifics and the ordinance right. You know, I think the, we have to do that under the, under the CUP. Under the concept plan, not so much. But my concern is that we would also have to get everything right there because I don't want to see everything developed into, into solar facilities on our agricultural land. The good thing about this, um, however, is that it, it can be, you know, a part of the decommissioning plan that the, uh, that the land be, the land be put back into its original shape. And we can, we can make that happen with the right wording in the, in the ordinance. And, and as far as the bonding is concerned, I've looked at a lot of other areas that do have solar facilities. And, and I've looked at their decommissioning plans and their bonding requirements, financial assurance requirements. But no matter which way we go, you know, we're going to have to get this right because I don't want it to become a disaster. And, and, uh, with either way, I want, I want to be fair. But I don't want, I don't want to, um, you know, I don't want to take anything away from the farmers. I don't, I don't want them to, to, um, turn their farms into developments, you know? It's, it's, it's a beautiful area of the county, uh, that we're considering right now. And, and I wanted to be able to keep it that way. But, you know, that, that's where we are. And I think the, I think the thing we need to look at are setbacks. You know, I wouldn't want a home that, um, I could look out my back door and see, uh, an array of solar panels, you know? I think we need to look at the vegetative buffers. I think we be, uh, if we can set the number, set a limit on the number of acres. And, um, so there are a lot of things that I think we can do and I think we need to get to it.
Okay, Commissioner Hudson, comments?
Yeah, um, our staff has done a great job of explaining most of the questions I had regarding this. Uh, saying that, I think the text amendment as is, is as least burdensome and intrusive as it could be to the property owners of Jefferson County. And because of that, I think we should pass it as it is.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Tab, could I just follow up on all of your comments with this concept? If, I believe that if, if we decide to change that to a conditional use permit out of an abundance of caution, um, I think that it should be sent back to the planning commission for, uh, their comment or, uh, approval that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan because that would be a fairly substantive change. I'm just pointing that out. And I think that, um, you know, that could probably happen relatively quickly. But I, I just am, um, I believe that out of an abundance of caution, that should be done.
Okay.
Was that a motion on Commissioner Hudson's part or was he just making a general comment?
I can make it a motion if you want it to be.
Well, I'll second that motion.
Well, let's, Commissioner Hudson, will you state the motion? Because I didn't take it as a motion to begin with. I understood what you said, but make it, let's make it a formal motion.
Yeah, it's a, uh, I'll move we pass the text amendment as is and it meets the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Discussion.
Yeah, uh, I have, um, I mean, I would like to see the, the setbacks increased. I'd like to see them doubled, in fact. And, um, that is my, and, and that the buffers be vegetative buffers whenever there is a residence or, um, residential residences that, that can, that have that view within their, you know, within their view shed. So those are, when, I, I, I mean, with those couple of amendments, I, I think that those are things that, uh, I think would help a whole lot. And, uh, I, I would like to set a limit on the number of acres. But I'm not sure how to.
How to do that.
How to do that.
Right.
Those changes, I, I, I would, you know, I am leaning toward the concept plan because there is still an opportunity for interaction between the developer and the public. And that's my biggest, that's my biggest hangup right now is that, is that, there's more of an opportunity under the concept plan than there is under the CUP. So that's what I want to be sure happens. And so I'm inclined to support the concept plan with those changes.
Patty, I just, my, I feel that there's, um, I, I don't, um, agree with how you've, um, see the concept plan versus conditional use. I, I think there's, um, I think the public will still be able to make comments during the CUP. But there's a little bit more emphasis if they, um, that the, what, the BZA can require the developer to do chan, uh, changes instead of just a proffer. And maybe I am misunderstanding the methodology between the two different processes. Alex, uh, I thought we went over that, but Patty feels there's more public interaction. And maybe there is, but I think there's more of a, you can come up with an additional requirement and.
My concern over that is that I would much rather see the developer and the public, come up with, uh, come up with changes that are suitable to the public than having the Board of Zoning Appeals make that decision. I mean, I think that, and it's not that I think they would make a bad decision, but, but I think that, I think that the public has a better chance of getting what they want under a concept plan.
But I don't, I don't think, it depends on the developer if they, they want to do that or not under.
That's right, that's right.
Okay.
I get, I understand it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, I just want to say I, I agree with Patty as far as the limiting acreage. You know, that, that's why I was proposing my, my theory. But, uh, I am not, Patty, I'm not sure how we word that. I've been attacked for my wording, so.
Well, we're going to be attacked for anything we do, Ralph. So it's not going to be one thing or another. So, you know, we just have to do the best we can. And I don't know how to do that wording either. But I, I don't know, I don't know how we do that.
We'll work with our staff here and see what we could do.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Compton. Commissioner Lawrence Eddie, just for the record, I never called you a socialist. If you are or not, it's not really my prerogative to judge you on that. But, uh, as far as.
You, you did call it a socialist plan.
I, I said it was a pri, infringement on private property rights. But, uh.
You did, you did not call. You did not call me a Bolshevik. I, I will correct me on that, correct myself on that.
Appreciate that. My thing is, uh, my biggest problem is I agree with Patsy. Here's the thing, I, I too wanted a conditional use permit until staff clarified it for us probably 20, 30 minutes ago. So I'm more inclined to support the concept plan in that regard. The also, my problem is restricting farmers' land to 15 to 20%, etc. The fact of the matter is these types of facilities are not financially viable unless they have larger scale. And another thing that has not been brought up is we have a real opportunity in Jefferson County and West Virginia as a significant coal state to do our part in reducing carbon emissions on the power grid. So the argument that it's not directly benefiting residents of Jefferson County is not correct. It's going to the PJM market, which we all take power from, which will collectively benefit all of us with reduced carbon emissions. So there is a positive impact to county residents, even though the power is not directly going from the solar farm to their house.
My understanding is that people pushing most for this are three companies called Microsoft, Amazon, and the other one that they're pushing so they can advertise that they're going to total solar. And I think their third parties are really pushing this project for them, not necessarily for the local users. But again, I, solar is coming. But I do think the state had an idea that to use marginal lands for solar. In this case, we're not using marginal land. We're using some of the best farmland in West Virginia. All right.
But it can still build a development on that prime farmland as current zoning allows, correct Alex?
That is correct.
So it, it may never be prime farmland regardless if the private property farmer decides not to be a farmer anymore. That's what I'm trying to get at. If there, the farmers are telling us it's not financially viable to be a farmer anymore, that's very unfortunate. I too would love to see the farms stay farms. So they already have a ability to become a development. If they don't want to be a farmer, it's now they give it a second option. They become a solar farm, not a development. So that's where I'm coming from. I'll shut up now.
Well, I, I do have, I mean, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to limit the amount of acreage. I don't want to, you know, I want to make it viable for the farmers. But at the same time, you know, I don't know, I don't know what percentage of land would be, would be something that would be considered viable for this project.
Yeah, all, all, yeah, all hard questions to answer. I don't think anyone has the perfect answer to that, Patsy, but I understand where you're coming from. My understanding is that large tracts make it, you know, economically feasible, so.
Well, I know when we first started talking about this, I know that, you know, it was stated that usually within, within what, how many feet of a transmission line is where the most appropriate place to put the solar panels would go. I mean, it, it, so I don't know if that's accurate or not. I think that, and I do want to double the buffers and I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance that we double the, double the size of the buffers when it comes to residential property.
The setback to 200 feet?
Sorry, yes.
I just want to clarify, because I did want to clarify your comment about buffer too. When you said earlier that you wanted to make sure it was a vegetative buffer, are you wanting to eliminate the possibility that it could be a fence instead of vegetation? Or were you wanting?
No, because I think, I think the, I think the, I think the facility, the owner of the facility is actually going to have to have fencing around it, no matter whether there's a vegetative buffer or not. So I believe there's supposed to be a fence around it. But I would also like to see in residential areas, a vegetative buffer to offset the effects of the fencing and the, and to try to help the view shed of the residence.
There's a few different, there's the security fencing that the facility will have around the, the range. And then there's the buffer requirement when you're next to a residence and that can be either vegetative or an opaque fence.
Well, I, I would say, I would prefer a vegetative as, as opposed to the opaque fence.
And the, and the proposed buffer standards as they're in there, you want to retain it or?
I want to retain, I want to, as far as the residence is concerned, to be able to have the, the setback doubled where the residences are located, where there might be a residence.
Okay, so a 200-foot setback only if there's a residence or for all projects, regardless of what's next to them?
Well, I think, you know, if we're in the agricultural area and we're looking at farmland, I would say, I, I don't know that I would, I would double, I would double it all the way around.
Okay, so a 200-foot setback all the way around and the vegetative buffer, which right now is, is a 20-foot wide buffer minimum.
Yes, yes.
Keep that as is or double that too?
So I'm sorry, there's already a 200, I think I saw, there was already a 200-foot buffer there where there are residences.
Yeah, so the, the facilities, the panels themselves, if they are within 200 feet of a residence, they have to install a 20-foot wide vegetative buffer.
Oh, right, okay.
The required setbacks from all property lines, regardless of the adjoining use, is 100 feet right now. So what I heard was that you want the setback itself for all panels to be 200 feet from all property lines and that you want a vegetative buffer to be retained when there's a residence. So all I'm trying to clarify is if you wanted the buffer increased also, the vegetative buffer.
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Now, Patsy, are your, is that a motion as Alex explained it?
Yes, it is. Thank you for clarifying.
I will second that. That is something I have concerns about that not only for an existing house, but any house that may be built in the future adjacent to a solar facility. I think it dramatically decreases adjoining property owners' options for what they may want to do with their property and it decreases the value on the marketplace.
Commissioner Tab, point of order, I think we already motioned on the floor.
Oh, you're correct.
Did you second that motion?
You're correct. I'm sorry. Procedurally, I am in error. So the motion will go back to the primary motion, the first motion, should I say, by Caleb.
Point of order, but is Patsy amending? I thought she was amending that.
I'm amending.
Yeah, she's amending it.
Okay, I'm amending. It's a motion to amend.
Okay, I'll rescind my.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping us all on our toes. So the motion is to amend the buffering requirements. And I won't get into the specifics because I think staff has it, but it's increasing the buffering or setbacks.
I'll second the entire motion with Commissioner Nolan's amendments.
Okay, all right. So we will vote on the amendment first. And then we will go back to the primary motion. Is that correct?
Do we have to or can I just accept them?
I think you need to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, we are going to vote onto the amendment to change the buffering requirements and, and set, setback and buffering requirements to the current text amendments on the table.
And, and I think it's just the setbacks. I don't think.
Okay, you're right, you're right, just the setbacks.
Yes.
To increase the setbacks. All right, everybody clear on the motion?
As much.
Thank you. I know, it's been a little cumbersome here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried unanimously. Now, we're back to the primary motion, which is to accept the text amendments as is with the exception of the amendment on the setbacks. Anybody have any final comments on this motion? Okay, well, I'm just going to say, you know, I'm, I want to tread carefully and move ahead cautiously. And I, I still think the conditional use process gives us the most options to make any site as neighborly, neighbor friendly as possible. I think we'll have a huge learning curve. The staff will have a great burden with inspections and so forth. So that's where I'm coming from. All right.
And I agree.
All right, the motion before us is to approve file number ZTA 19-03 as presented with the exception of increasing setbacks. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries three to two. Okay, that was a big one. All right, moving along. Are we done every, oh, we don't have Mr. Nathan here online. I'm moving back to item number six.
I think that I can just, just waive all my things for this time.
All righty.
What about the speaker? I can't figure out how to send a message.
Okay, I don't, oh, here we go, number seven. This was Commissioner Compton's proposal, agenda item. Can you, I remember the issue but not the details, so could you review that for us?
Yeah, so I guess a few months back, I think it's been now, the Charlestown City Council voted to change the ordinance for how they appointed to a CTUB board. And it affected the county representative slightly as far as us proposing three and them not agreeing to the three and then us giving three more and then they could just essentially, I guess, put their individual in our spot as the county rep. Which in my mind goes against how the whole consolidation agreement was approved by all parties and the Public Service Commission. So, and we were not notified prior to this vote by the city of Charlestown. I'm going to say as a courtesy, or they should have done that irregardless of being courteous. So that's where we're stemming from on this issue. I, I'm going to make a proposal and actually make a motion that we allow our former council for the PSD consolidation, Will, Will Warbaugh, to briefly review those changes and see if those are acceptable within the consolidation agreement and report back to the county commission. Because it is our purpose and my initial pushing this to be consolidated to make sure the county had their rep. If Charlestown recreated an ordinance outside of that consolidation agreement, they're in the wrong. So I think that's the first step. It should be very brief and low cost for him to just look at those few changes and see if they're in line with agreements. So I'm going to move the higher Will Warbaugh, I can't say the last name, forgive me. So quickly, briefly, look over those changes and report back to the county commission all those changes.
Yeah, I'm going to second.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question and I, I'm going to tell you, Josh, I'm not opposing your motion, but time wise, has the commission already done disappointments and stuff? Or are we trying to catch them for the next time?
We already have a representative on CTUB, Ms. Milliron, that represents the county ratepayers. This is just going forward, so they haven't acted upon that new change to the ordinance. It's just, it's a question of was that change allowed for the consolidation agreement? That's where we're at right now.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, to me, what they've done is just, is just, you know, it goes against, it goes against the agreement that we had with them initially. And, and I certainly think that we need to, you know, we need to be aware of these things, number one. And I don't know why we weren't aware of it. I know we have a representative on that board. I don't understand why someone didn't know before this happened. You know, maybe the representative didn't know, but if she knew, she should have come to us and, and to, to, to inform us what was going on. And, you know, I'm not sure why that didn't happen. But at any rate, I'm in support of, I'm in support of the motion, Josh.
Thank you. I, I, go ahead, Jane. I, I have a clarification on Commissioner Nolan's.
Okay, I, I just, it seems, it appears to be a backdoor approach to undoing the agreement that we had with the city of Charlestown and, you know, the dissolution of the PSD. It's very disappointing, so.
Commissioner Nolan's point, our rep on CTUB is the rep for CTUB. This occurred at the Charlestown City Council, so.
Okay.
On your board.
Oh, wow. So the, so CTUB didn't know they were planning on doing this then, I guess?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying our rep on the CTUB board, not the Charlestown City Council.
Okay, I thought it was coming from CTUB. I thought it came from CTUB through the council to the commission. Sorry, Josh.
That's fine.
She did provide comment to the city council during the, when it was amended, that our representative did provide, commented when CTUB was amending the ordinance. I understand that Ms. Milliron did appear to make comment on that change.
Okay.
And also, the, there was under, I think she was under the assumption that the county commission had been contacted regarding this change and we just said nothing. At least that's what led to believe occurred. We all know that we were not contacted and Stephanie has looked previously, there's no correspondence to suggest otherwise.
I checked in the city manager because I think it was initially, there was a comment made that made it sound like we had gotten some notice. So I reached out to the city, I, we were frantically searching our email, our mail, to make sure we hadn't overlooked it. And then I reached out to the city manager to ask where that notice had been sent. And that's when I discovered that we did not receive it.
Well, I think it's a back, I agree, it's a kind of a backhanded way approach to, to allowing, having Charlestown just appoint whoever they want on that board and not necessarily a good representative of county residents. And that's very upsetting to me.
The motion on the floor is to approve the hiring of Will Warbaugh to look into the Charlestown Article 147. Did I cover that, Josh?
Yeah, I have one quick last comment. I would hope that Charlestown City Council can come to a agreement between them and the county commission amicably. But if they did in fact violate the consolidation contract and agreement, I would likely propose we go to the Public Service Commission and submit a complaint.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll have, Will Warbaugh research the issues and we can decide what to do from there. So, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, the only thing else I see.
Commissioner Tab, I, I just wanted to touch base with you regarding the storm water management issue. Is the commission viewing that as a separate ordinance or separate issue as related to the storm or the solar amendment, or are we viewing it as a part of the solar amendment? I'm only saying that because it may require a separate motion if it's a different, if we're trying to amend the storm water management motion specifically to address solar energy facilities. And I believe that that was the intent, although we could, we could always address it separately, you know, at a later, later date.
If you want to, I'll make a motion that we accept the storm water management portion of the solar issue as done by our engineering department, as amended by the engineering department.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to, oops, sorry.
No, we're viewing that then as a part of the solar text amendment because that's what's on the agenda, right?
Okay.
So, okay, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, I'm just trying to look at the wording here and I don't see, see that listed, but we'll do that and cover all our bases. The motion is to approve the solar text amendment in regard to solar facilities.
Concerning stormwater, concerning stormwater management.
Yeah, yeah. Except the amendment, the text amendment regarding stormwater management. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I was going to move ahead down to county administrator reports.
We've received two more applications for the COVID-19 pandemic block grant, that's $100,000 that Governor Justice provided to the counties to use on COVID-related expenses. It has to be expended, just a reminder, in accordance with the CARES Act on expenses that would be eligible for the CARES Act. The first one we actually received is from, I thought it was from the band, and it is from Jefferson High School Band, but it's actually from the band boosters. Because initially I was confused as to why the Board of Education wouldn't pay, but maybe the band boosters paid it out of their fundraising funds. They are asking for $3,994.80 and they, they purchased masks for all students and so that they would match the uniform. And then they also purchased horn covers for the bells of the instruments. In the application indicates that research has shown that the bell covers will help cut down on the virus being emitted. They also, it looks like purchased polo shirts. The application doesn't address the polo shirts. I can't see how those would be related to COVID in any way. So I would recommend that if you do approve this, it would be 200, you would remove the $200 that they spent on staff polo shirts from their, from the request. So there's that one, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I'd see that it's the band boosters and not. And I will say that Mr. Lynch, who's the band director there, had contacted me before asking if we would submit it for our COVID reimbursement through the state. And then he found out about this grant and the boosters applied for this. So it looks like the other expenses, the masks and the, the bell covers would be COVID-related expenses.
So Stephanie, I have a question. I was looking at the, the submission statement and the examples of ineligible and, you know, what it looks like it covered to me. It's the, I, could you show, tell me where on here it's authorized that we reimburse for those expenses? I really tried hard to find something to me like it would cover it, but I don't. I agree with the polo shirts, we need to take those out if you do.
Yeah, take the shirts out.
But the only thing I could find would be under number two, public health expenses. I have a question mark beside it, expenses for public safety measures undertaken in response to COVID-19.
Yeah, so.
It's kind of a, sorry.
I would put it under number four, which is expenses of actions facilitated compliance with COVID-19-related public health measures. But I know that the examples underneath there are not, do not relate to what they've done, but they're basically buying masks for students. And I guess the school board, I don't know why the school board would not have covered this expense unless it's because they ordered masks that matched the uniform and just decided that they didn't want to do that. And I don't know that they ever asked the Board of Education to apply anyway, the paperwork does not indicate that. So we have, we, so, just to give you an example, I purchased masks for our workforce here at the county, and that was reimbursed through the CARES Act submission through the state. So I think it's, it's, that is, that is what it would come under. Now whether the county commission wants to get into providing funding for an entity that is also, has also received CARES Act funding and has like a separate pot of money is, is a different story. But I think they're doing it to prevent the spread of coronavirus for, for students involved in band or marching band. So I think that it's kind of like a PPE, especially the masks, maybe the horn covers. But I think, I mean, I have seen where that, that's how musicians and not just marching bands are using those horn covers to prevent the spread of the virus. So that's what I think it would come under. But again, it's, I'm not sure why the board wouldn't have provided that for the students in the marching band.
Well, and that's, that was my other question, and you know, I, you know, I wonder if they, if, if we can find out if they apply to the Board of Education for reimbursement for those expenses. That's, I would feel better about it, I think, except for the polos. That's a no.
Yeah.
But, so, you know, I, I'm not really opposed to providing the reimbursement, but if, if, you know, it's unusual for us to get those requests when they have Board of Education. That's their major funding source, I guess.
Patsy, let me add something there. Over the years, I've heard, I had a neighbor who had three kids and band and stuff. The Board of Education doesn't pay much, that they have to do a lot of fundraising to keep their bands' operation, uniforms and I think they, I think they pay for the instruments, but I think uniforms and everything else.
Each individual pays for their own instrument.
But I have no problem with checking on it.
Yeah.
And a band geek from way back, I think most of the commissioners knew that. I was in marching band at college. So, yeah, I can tell you that there's a lot of fundraising that, you know, if we want to buy uniforms, we buy the uniforms ourselves, and that may be why. But it is a class, so marching band is a, is, it's an extracurricular activity, but it's also a class. And I, you know, like this, I just feel like
Well.
Provide that funding. So, I mean, I'm happy to reach out and get more information. We still have time to spend this money. They've already incurred the funding, you know, they've already purchased the, the supplies. So I'd be happy to get more information.
Yeah, and I'd like to know if they did apply to the school board and, you know, so. And then we bring it back for reconsideration. I don't want to say no right now, except for the polos.
Yeah.
The other stuff.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that approach. We get more information. Yeah, it appears like, you know, they just want to have all their masks matching, which I can certainly understand. But I don't know if that would really meet the requirements for reimbursement, that it's a fashion statement as opposed to, you know, COVID directly. Okay.
I'll reach out to them and see, try to get some more information. We did receive another one from the council on aging. They are pressing $2,546.52. They have not purchased these items yet, so it would be a situation where they would purchase them and then we would reimburse. They're asking for basically disinfectants and to buy the, kind of the disinfecting sprayers, which they do not have yet. Again, we had for ourselves applied through CARES Act funding through the state. We were reimbursed for that. So I do think that that would be an eligible expense for the, for the council on aging to purchase those disinfecting, the disinfecting for $2,546.52. However, I would write a check for that. I would make them incur the expense in the future.
Oh, okay. That's what you mean by, there's no quote, so that they haven't purchased it, so we really wouldn't be reimbursing them. Yeah. Okay.
We're receiving two types of applications as we've been going through this. And some of them have already incurred the expenses required for all of your expenses. And then we're getting people who say, hey, I want to do this thing, but they haven't incurred any expenses yet. And for that, just to, because again, we're, we're on the hook for this money if it's not spent correctly. So just for that reason, you know, if any, if we're getting them from entities that have not incurred the expenditures and requiring them to, to say, yes, you are approved, now buy it and submit us the, the, you know, the invoice.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's a, you know, that's certainly something that once we get the invoice, I would certainly support reimbursing that expense.
Yeah, yeah. I'm in, I'm in agreement with that. Those are just all necessary items if you're going to be interacting anyway with the public and on their buses and delivery routes and so forth. Yeah, that needs to happen.
Yeah, so I think that one requires a a motion to approve.
Okay. Well, I move we approve the request for COVID-19 pandemic block grant for Jefferson County Council on Aging that, in that, you know, they be reimbursed after they have purchased the items and then we have a final figure. I mean, we think it's going to be about $2,500, yeah. Okay. All those in favor of the motion of supporting the council on aging request for COVID funding, but it will not be, the check will not be cut until they have actually purchased the items and we reimburse them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then up here, and I've been getting emails from Shepherdstown shares wanting to know what their funding has been approved or not, and I see you have under review because, because they do work with community ministries, so we don't want double dipping.
Right. So they're both under review to determine if those would be eligible and if the state would be eligible. So I'm still waiting to hear that from the state.
Do we think we'll ever get an answer from the state?
Yes, I do, I do. I reached out to it just this week. So I think I will get an answer. It's the person we've been working with on our CARES Act.
Right. Well, and I just want to make clear, you know, that Shepherdstown shares, I think, works in partnership or is an arm of community ministries. I'm not quite sure the organizational structure there that makes sure it's not, there's no double dipping. Of course, we'll get deemed on that too, so if that's the situation. So you've got that under review and it's been submitted to the state. Okay. All right, any other questions for Stephanie on this pandemic block grant? All right.
I want to thank Sandy, who's been receiving the applications. She made the spreadsheet for you. So she's been kind of coordinating, not coordinating, kind of, she has been coordinating this process. So I'm going to thank her because she's, she's done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sounds good. And we haven't gotten anything specifically from the towns.
No.
We kind of did this so there wouldn't be any double dipping, like, request to the towns and a request to the county, so.
And I am, we're continuing to have those task force meetings on Monday. And I understand from the towns, they are applying for their own CARES reimbursement. So things that they would have asked us to pay for, I think they're getting reimbursed from those, getting reimbursed on those from the state, so they haven't asked us for any.
Okay. All right. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay. Halloween trick or treat.
So, this is also, this is coming from that COVID-19 task force call on Monday. At least two of the municipalities, I think, have decided that they are going, you know, they don't endorse trick or treat, but they set a time for it. We never have done that, so we have kind of stayed with the Halloween game altogether. Shepherdstown, I think, is not going to have trick or treat. They're going to tell, they're going to tell residents they don't want people trick or treating. And I think Bolivar is going to have trick or treat. And they asked me if the county this year would not endorse trick or treating, but would say this is the time we want it to be so that we're kind of dispersing everyone throughout the county. We're not having everyone come into Charlestown to trick or treat and we're not, you know, to go into the municipalities who said, hey, we're actually having it to, you know, so everybody's on the same time, same date, and, you know, there, there are plenty of places to go. I kind of drafted, if you, if you are interested in doing this, and I told the COVID-19 task force that I would put this on for your consideration, I drafted kind of a, a thing that should be on your screen now, and it's a rough draft. But it basically is a sweep in on Halloween. In the past, I'll just read it. In the past, Halloween trick or treat has never been an event officially endorsed by the county commission of Jefferson County. As in those prior years, the commission does not intend to officially endorse any trick or treating event this year. However, in an attempt to create uniform throughout the county and to prevent large groups from gathering in one area of the county, the commission will join with the Jefferson County municipalities to suggest a common time of trick or treating for all citizens. Accordingly, the commission suggests that individuals who wish to participate in trick or treatings do so from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Saturday, October 31st, 2020. As always, residents may choose not to participate and each family can determine what is best for them. Any residents who wish to hand out candy, candy to trick or treaters should turn their porch light on to indicate participation.
Okay.
In light of the COVID-19 pandemic, the county commission encouraged citizens who do participate in trick or treat festivities to continue to practice good social distancing and distancing and follow any guidelines that may be issued by our local and state health departments. And I do believe that our local health department, actually, I know they are because the health department's on that call too. They are going to issue guidelines for residents, kind of a local guide to follow. So I didn't know if you wanted to do anything like that, if you want me to change anything that's written up, or you just don't want to get involved in it at all. That's up to you. I was asked by the COVID-19 task force to kind of, kind of take, not endorse an event, but to say, if you're going to occur and you're interested in participating, this is the time we would like you to do it. And that way, you know, everybody isn't flooding Charlestown
Yeah.
to trick or treat, or Bolivar, or Ranson, and Ranson is also, I think, they have both agreed six to eight. So I got that 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM from the two municipalities that have already discussed it. And I understand from Mayor Detmer that Bolivar will discuss it and likely also provide that same time.
Quick question, this is Commissioner Compton. So if we're suggesting a two-hour timeframe, doesn't that mean the maximum number of people will be out at that specific timeframe, probably? Which means larger groups, which goes against with social distancing, I would think? I'm just trying to make sure this is counterproductive. So maybe if it's four to eight, it would be spread out amongst a lot more hours and people will spread out more. This feels like we're consolidating all those people into one timeframe.
I will say that the cities have always set a time for trick or treat, so they don't endorse an event, but they do set a time and it's usually a two-hour window. So if you want to change the timeframe or do anything like that, I do know that the cities, they're doing six to eight. So if you want to change the timeframe or do anything like that, I do know that the cities, they're doing six to eight. But, and they have, they have always, so the cities have always set a time for trick or treat. We have never, we have never said anything about Halloween or trick or treating.
Yeah.
And I know, I know in my subdivision, we also set the same six to eight. So individual subdivisions probably do the same, or they have the ability to do the same. So just FYI.
Yeah. I see Josh's point, but I also understand that a lot of people go, if they're on different times and different dates, they go to Charlestown, then they go to Shepherdstown, and Shepherdstown is just wall to wall people. And, and then maybe come back and do their, maybe their subdivision does it on a different date. Or a different time, or they can get them all in. So I wonder for Josh's comments, that if we made it five to eight PM, wouldn't be a little bit better? Just to spread out the time and hopefully get the people spread out where they're going trick or treating.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that.
And you may also know Halloween, and I have done that exact thing that Commissioner Tab is talking about. If there are more, if there are additional opportunities to trick or treat, I have taken my family to all of them that are on separate days. So I know that people do do that.
Well, and I don't know if expanding the time mean people will try to make it to two different locations. So that might be, yeah, counterproductive. So hmm, well, I guess maybe five, well, that is you doing five to eight PM. That's three hours. That's a pretty good timeframe. So I thought for some reason it was six to eight. Yeah.
I had six to eight. I think Commissioner Compton is suggesting or someone.
Okay. Right, yeah. Well, I think I said that. Yeah, I didn't realize you were changing it as we were discussing.
Oh, well, I, I, yeah, that's, I
I think you do have to put Josh's address there, so we all show up there at five.
I'll be there at Seriously, I, I have no problem with issuing a statement, but I, I don't think the county commission should be regulating holidays or whatnot. I'm all for residents to go out as they please on a holiday. It's their prerogative. So if someone comes to my house at three, I'm going to give them candy.
Okay. So, well, the original draft of this statement, well, do we want to do a statement, I guess, is the first question. And then are the hours that are now posted at five to eight PM okay with everyone? So I
It really doesn't make any difference to me because we have our own time frames in this, in our subdivision. I don't know about the people that are not in subdivisions that live outside of the municipalities. You know, I, I don't know. I mean, it really doesn't matter either way to me. But, you know, I, I, five to eight is not bad, but I, I kind of agree with Josh on this. Sorry, Josh, sorry, but I do. And so I just kind of feel like, you know, at, at least I think people in areas outside of regulated areas will at least have an idea of when to expect people. I mean, I think that's the only upside to it that I can see.
Well, I'm thinking, and I, I certainly understand, you know, this really isn't under the jurisdiction of the county commission. I would think it would be a better idea to ask the health department. I mean, if we're looking at public health issues, it really should come from them as to a suggestion on trick or treating. I would think.
And I did. Sorry. Gillian is on that committee, and she did indicate that she felt like that trick or treating could be done safely. It's an outdoor activity. People could continue to socially distance. So she felt like, I know the CDC has issued recommendations on how to trick or treat safely, and they've, they have it in a high risk category. And I know that they will be issuing regulations, so I can certainly kind of put the ball in their court and say, okay, you tell us what we should do.
Um, how do others feel? I'm, I'm with handing this over to the health department if they want to make a public statement or try to focus the times of trick or treating or whatever they may, whatever their take may be on the situation.
Yeah, I prefer that method as well.
This is Josh. I agree with Commissioner Tab and Nolan.
Okay.
I think it's more in their ballpark.
Okay.
Just making it unanimous.
All right. Okay. Well, by consensus, we'll, we'll hand this over to the health department because I do think it's more a public health issue. And we want everyone to be safe and maybe they have a different approach that would be even better than what's been proposed here. So. Okay. All righty. Now, I guess maybe this, we're down to your last item, Stephanie?
Yes. So this is really actually a request to hire a seasonal employee. It used to be in our budget and we took it out. But this year, and I will say that we have one person who prepares, sends out, you know, we mail, collects, does everything that's associated with the ambulance fee. And we've been, and Michelle has now been helping with that as well. And if you look at the other offices that are collecting, you know, taxes or money, they have many employees doing that. And, you know, they make out more, maybe more bills for personal property, but still, if you do the math, it's not working out. Just one person do it. So we have people who are calling in. I told you earlier that switching to the new billing system, we're looking at the assessors data. And people are saying, well, I wasn't billed this way in the past. And sometimes it's incorrect and sometimes it's correct, but we research every one of those. And so we're getting a, a larger volume of phone calls. We have people coming into the office where we're collecting it. And then also we have mail that's piling up where people have mailed them back in. And when people send checks in and it hasn't been cashed in a certain amount of time, they're, you know, then they start calling and saying,
Yeah.
where's my check? You know, is it paid? We did extend the late fee. You know, there's no late fee until December 31st, 2020, but people still get fancy when they write back. At least within a couple of weeks of that check has been cashed. So I'm asking you to hire a seasonal employee to help at least work on that backlog of mailing and enter it into the new system. The good thing with the Tyler system is that you can enter it from anywhere. You can log on. Then, and there's lots of things that person can do. They'd be able to enter payments, collection attorney, they'll be able to manually enter the online payments. Right now, unfortunately, our credit card system, and we're going to correct this. We just need to, we need to switch vendors. It's not, it's not going to cost us anything. But right now, our online payment system isn't talking to our billing system. And so we have to manually transfer those online payments. And I want people to take advantage of that option.
Yeah.
So we're, again, we're just, we have to manually transfer this. That will, that issue will be taken care of. We just have to, we're in the process of taking care of that right now. They'll be able to do property transfers from the tax office. We'll be able to return calls. They'll be able to assist Michelle, who right now is the one looking into customer disputes. So we, we have plenty of things for that seasonal person to do, and I, I promise not to use them, you know, to keep the person on any longer than we have to. Typically, we do reimburse the cost of collection from the ambulance fee. So Dawn's salary is reimbursed from the ambulance fee. I would suggest doing the same for the seasonal person. And I would tell you that you know, I think we're getting a bargain on how we're collecting the ambulance fee. So we, we have tried to keep our costs down. We've just reached the point where we need someone to help, and we have in years past on that as well. So we have hired It's just that we thought, oh, we can do it on our own. And we were trying to be good with our budget and we took it out. But I think it, it wouldn't even come out of your budget. It would come out of the ambulance fee budget. Because it's the cost of collection, which is allowed to be included. So that's what the request is for, is to ask for, that we be able to, to hire a seasonal employee.
Stephanie, this is Josh. Are, are we under a hiring freeze still based upon a previous motion or agreement?
We're not, we're not under a hiring freeze. We've asked people not. So I'll give you an example. I was approved for an HR specialist, having advertised for that position. When people are leaving, we're leaving those positions open for at least six months. That was the recommendation, is that we allow those positions to remain open. But we haven't, so except for public safety, we've allowed public safety to hire immediately. So Jeff is able to hire dispatchers, but I did not let him hire his CAD administrator. But I did let him hire dispatchers and then we allowed the ESA to hire their additional positions. But we have kept physicians open. We have a few openings in some other offices and we're not, there are no plans to fill those immediately. So, I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm asking you is because we have said, you know, we don't want to fill any positions. We want to limit part-time help if we don't need it. And I really feel like at this point, we need it.
Well, Stephanie, when you say seasonable, what time period and what's the budget for it?
Um, that's a good question. So the time period, I would say right now, I wouldn't plan on keeping it past December 31st, 2020. Comes into effect if it needed to go past that date, I would let you, you know, I would come back to you for authorization. But right now, I just want to get that backlog of mail that's sitting. And we have Jess doing some of that. But again, Jess is, you know, her job is to take care of, she's the executive assistant for you and really for the whole county. Because if, if other, if other people have problems, they call her.
Yeah.
So that would be my timeframe. And I'm trying to get the information on salary and amount.
I think if I just did some quick numbers. If, if we hired someone seasonally at about $15 an hour and, and they only worked about 20 hours a week, it would be about $400 a week with benefits. And it would depend on how many weeks we need them. I would say at least four, maybe, maybe eight at most would be the number we'd need someone. So it'd be $400 a week for roughly eight weeks, about $3,200.
Hey.
And cost benefit wise, and I, I know this is going to be a complete estimate on anybody making it. How much money would the county make having somebody do that? Because you're bringing funds in and getting them in the bank. I'm, I'm trying to see if it's going to be no net loss by doing this.
I, I think it's more a question of better customer service.
Okay.
That, um, yeah, Dawn is so overwhelmed that people are wondering why their checks haven't been cashed. People have questions and that's not counting the time it takes to physically enter the information and payments in the system.
Customer service, but that's also eating into what we can give to the ESA though.
That's true.
That's true. We're, we're, with, with the money not being in the bank fast enough, we're not able to do their quarterly distribution fast enough. But as far as a return on that investment, on getting the funds in there earlier, the interest we receive on that account really isn't a significant amount, you know. It wouldn't offset it that much, Ralph.
Well, and, and I think the, you know, I think the seasonal employee is certainly needed. I mean, I've been in there when she's been knee deep in envelopes and, and mailboxes and phone ringing and, you know, I, and I've seen, you know, I've seen the effects of one person trying to do it all in that, in that area. So and I don't think that the, would you say 3,400? Is that what you said, Michelle? About $3,400 for the, for the seasonal employee?
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, so really, I mean, there wouldn't really be any, any significant benefits because of the fewer number of hours. Is that right?
I, I would estimate 20 hours a week at least.
Okay.
Where it'd be no benefits, we would need to keep them under that minimum so that we don't have to add them to retirement. We don't have to add them to insurance.
Okay. All right. So, okay, well, I have a problem with it. I think it's a good idea. I think, you know, otherwise you just can't keep up. One person can't keep up during that time. And so I'll make the motion that we approve, that we approve temporary, no, seasonal employee for, to collect the ambulance fee.
So actually, I'm sorry, we, in the past, we've used a temp agency for that.
Okay.
Actually, cheaper to use the temp agency is what I'm being told. So
Okay.
I mean, but it would still be a seasonal person, but we would hire them through a temporary agency.
Okay.
Well, my question is, so you're going to be using this person one time a year. So, so there's also a training, you know, there's a, there's a little bit of a time element here too, because it takes time to train them. And is that person going to change every year? It could anyway, but are you going to have to, so?
It might, but it's not, it's not hard to enter them in. I, I can
I've got it too.
I can do it. And I mean, my, I think my computer skills leave something to be desired. So I feel like if I could do it, if we've got someone from a temp agency who can do that, they can there wouldn't be, and I don't know for that amount of time and that pay, if we would get someone who will be willing to come back on a recurring basis. I do know that there are some people, like in the assessors office, they're retired and they come back year after year as seasonal. But I'm not sure that we would, I'm not, I don't know if we'd be able to attract the same person, you know, if we actually
Right. Yeah. Well, my motion, I think, I think I made the motion, right? Did it make sense?
Okay. And I haven't gotten a second on that. And I believe the motion is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Patsy, that we hire a seasonal employee for, well, I think that about 20 hours a week to help with the backlog at the ambulance fee collections. And I think the, let's see, yeah, it's $15 an hour.
Yeah, through a temp agency. Do I need to put that here too?
Okay. Okay. All right. Any more discussion?
I, I said a quick thing. This is Josh. I fully support getting staff some extra help during these experiencing time, times of large quantities of mail, et cetera. My only question is, I know the clerk's office and other offices have put off and replacing personnel, and they're under some strain too. Do we still anticipate allowing them to refill those positions soon?
I think they would eventually be able to fill those positions. But I mean, again, even in our own office, we've not, we've not hired the new positions or, and we have not filled positions that have, that are vacant. But I think that eventually everyone will be able to hire and also hire the new positions.
Would, would we allow any subsequent departments to hire any sort of seasonal work to accommodate their periods as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a commission.
You already allow them to do that. The assessors office hires some seasonal help. I believe they have seasonal help right now. I believe the tax office also hires seasonal help in the summer to help with the influx of payments that they receive. So those, there are departments that do currently, you know, hire seasonal help for those high periods.
Well, I would think, think with the elections coming up, there's another area. Because as, as good as we are as commissioners on canvassing, that's a lot of envelopes to open and process. So.
Just, just back to Commissioner Compton's question regarding, will they be able to eventually fill that? I just want to add to what Stephanie said. I'll probably put that back on the agenda for December so that we can review that and determine whether or not it's time to lift some of those sanctions or, you know, deferrals that we implemented, you know, last fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay. All right. The, the basic motion is that we are hiring a seasonal employee to assist with ambulance fee collections for about four to eight weeks. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I, I, that's all I have. Finished.
Okay. Do we have any?
Commissioners, I also wanted to, going back to our solar ordinance, do we have an effective date for that? The amendment to the ordinance was actually fairly benign as far as like the amount of changes that it will take to actually put the words in there. It does take a lot of time whenever you change one of these things, to change the formatting and things like that. So in order to put it in a recordable form, it will likely take a, a bit of time. And then second, and to me, the far greater concern is, we were talking about that decommissioning plan. I think that that, you know, it would be the best practice to have that completed and taken care of before folks actually start filing under the ordinance. So that way, you know, you, they know what they're filing for, right? And so, and as we discussed before, we haven't done that pending getting the, feeling whether or not the ordinance was going to pass. But now that it has, the amendment has passed, that's a thing that needs to be taken care of, and the bonding integrated and all that. And those are some fairly complicated things, especially the bonding part. So just, you know, wondering if, if the commission should make that ordinance effective at some point in the future so that hopefully folks will have a, a complete unfinished document before they, they start filing. You know, I was thinking maybe, you know, maybe like 30 days or something like that from today, maybe November 2nd, something like that.
That's fine with me.
Or whatever the commission's pleasure, pleasure would be. So then I think that the commission, we need to probably vote to, to make the thing effective on that date, just to tie up all the loose ends.
Now, my question is, the bonding and decommissioning plans will be, will it be required that they are presented to the county commission for approval? And then, then the other thing is, doesn't all this have to go back to the planning commission before we can put an effective date on it? Since we've made an amendment, I know it's not much, but yeah.
And, I, I mean, I don't know, there, it's not really any kind of substantive amendment that you made.
Okay.
But, I mean, that would make it maybe more, more bulletproof as far as anyone making any claims against the ordinance. But, but I, I've, I really, it's not a substantive change. And the, the county solar commissioning guidelines are already mentioned in the ordinance. They're, they've just not been drafted yet. So that would be a thing, that there would be a, a couple of county commission meetings between now and then that, you know, I could get it back to you and have you take a look at it. But.
Yeah, there'd be exactly two, two.
Yeah. If that gives you enough time, I'll make the motion that we make the effective date.
Well, well, could I just say, if, if I'm bringing it back to you to look at, then it would depend on what you all want to do. Because if you all want to, like, get comments on that and all that stuff before you, you know, before it goes into effect, then that pushes it farther out. So, you know, we might want to add a little bit of time to that if you feel like.
November 16th more, November 16th more reasonable?
Yeah, that would be all up to you all, as far as how much comment and things you want on, on any of that.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make the motion that we, that we make the effective date on the, on November 16th.
Second, you're welcome.
Okay. I'm, just so you know, I'm, I'm going to vote against that because I think the bonding and decommissioning plans are very important, and we need to review that thoroughly, and it may take more than a couple of meetings. And I would prefer January 1 date. I think that's easier for everybody to work with, and we would have plenty of time to really hone in on these accessory plans that need to be part of any action on a solar facility.
And that would be up to the commission.
Right.
If you ever look at a lawyer and say, do you want more time? They'll say, sure.
Well, and, you know, we may not approve it the first time we see it, so I get down in the weeds.
If, if you're going to go there, you might want to go to January the 4th, which would be the Monday after, or, or maybe even a couple of days after that, depending on, you know, maybe January the 11th or something. It's up to you all, however you want to, you want to address that.
Well, I'd really think we should work it through before the end of the year and make it effective, but that's my point of view. Are there any other comments on the motion on the floor?
I think 45 days is a good starting point, if it's okay with Nathan.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll do what we, what we can.
So what is the date for 45 days?
November 16, I think.
Oh, okay. I still, yeah. All right. So was the original motion for November 2nd, and we're amending it to November 16th? Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay. The motion before us is to make the solar energy facilities text amendments effective November 16th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll, even though I've suggested a date, I want to vote no. Be consistent.
I, I'm opposed also. All right. And, and my, and so the motion carries three to two. And my point is, I don't think the bonding and decommissioning plans are simple documents, and we need to be as thorough with them as with everything else. And also to give staff to get time to create the document and get it to us, and then us have a spirited debate on it. Okay. Are there any other action items before us today that I, oh, have missed or need to be addressed?
I misspoke when I said I was finished. I just have some announcements for you. One is, you'll see in your information on the agenda that there is a Board of Assessment Appeals scheduled for October 20th. I believe that is on utility land, that we, that our assessor does not value that's done through the state. So the state sets that hearing. Then we're going to do a peer here and in Berkeley County on the same day, but both of us agreed to do that virtually. So it will be a virtual meeting. They're not going to travel all the way out to the window now, but you will need at least a quorum available on that date. And again, that will be virtually. The other thing is, is that I sent an email out asking about November 12th as a potential date for the joint meeting with fire and rescue, the ESA and the county commission. I heard back from a majority of commissioners, and that date works. So if that date works, and just have Commissioner Tab, who's been working to set that up, let them know that that date will work for us, and that will be held at independent fire companies.
Right. And.
That's 6:00 PM?
6:30, I think it was.
Yeah, I think, I do think it's at 6:30, but I'd have to look back on my calendar. And, you know, I, I will be there and participate, but there has to be social distancing. I prefer everyone wear masks. I know that's a big room, and it's hard to talk with the masks. I've got several family members that are high risk. I don't want to bring anything home. So I hope everybody is courteous in that respect.
Yeah, I agree with Jane.
Okay. All right. It is at 6:30, Stephanie? Okay. County Commissioner reports. Anybody have anything they want to share?
Yeah, I'll go first, if that's okay.
Fine.
Go first, it doesn't matter.
No, go ahead.
Okay, just a quick thing. Parks and Rec, obviously, same financial issues. That loan they got is only to be used for, like, capital items, et cetera. It cannot be used for operating expenses, like salaries or anything like that. So we may be hearing from them in the next meeting with a certain request. A second thing, Solid Waste Authority. There's some issues, a few, maybe months ago, I think it was back in June, we had a new company working as far as solid waste, trash pickup, et cetera, and we have a recycling ordinance that will be on next month's, next commission meeting, update potentially, from what I talked with Nathan. So there, they promised us they would start doing recycling. I called as an interesting customer yesterday, and they have not started recycling, and we're four or five months from when they told us they were trying to start it. So we need to talk about that because they have a competitive advantage to our current company that has to abide by that and charge customers for it.
Yeah.
So that'll be discussed at next meeting. That's all.
That's a good point. I've noticed the new waste haul carrier in the county, and yeah, no recycling, which is a problem.
Yeah.
I'm kind of surprised I got past Public Service Commission, but maybe it's because they're not familiar with our ordinance. I don't know how that all.
They are regulated because all the trash comes out of the state of West Virginia. There's a stipulation of how they operate that may be a loophole.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll talk about that further.
Okay. Other commissioners?
Well, I'll go next. I had, on the 23rd, I had a JCDMA committee meeting in the afternoon, and a, actually had a couple of committee meetings. And then on the 24th, we had the solar workshop. I think, I had that on there. I don't know if we did it. Well, I also have, no, it was on the 25th, that was Friday. And then I had a Council on Aging bylaws committee meeting. And I just wanted to say quickly that the Jefferson Center, the CBB new building is, is very near completion. So hopefully, we'll be hearing more about that really soon. Very excited about it. I've been in there, and it's just a, it's going to be such a great addition to our county and to tourists to say, enter the state there.
Oh, I look forward to that, especially whatever displays they have and so forth. I knew they wanted to make them more interactive and so forth, so I think that'll be exciting.
Yeah, it will.
Might be limiting during these current challenging times, but at least they'll, they'll get it open.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have any, any employees there right now. I mean, we don't have any employees right now, except for our director. And so we're looking forward to trying to get things back to as normal as they can be, given the circumstances.
All righty. Commissioner Hudson? Anything to report? Commissioner Lawrence Eddy?
Nothing lately, except I think Patsy and I have a broadband meeting on October 14th. And I think we're going to look at the, you know, they've been collecting data from their, their.
Yeah, the survey.
Survey, the internet and mail-ins, and I think they had a pretty substantial return.
Yeah. Well, nothing's shown the glaring deficiencies in our internet capabilities like COVID. And these kids trying to go to school, and my daughter has two, doing virtual learning, and she has her work for the federal government, and husband has to get online. So, yeah, there's a lot of challenges for families to work through. So hopefully, that all can be approved for everybody. Let's see. I can't, well, I've spent most of my time, I've gone to a few virtual meetings. Can't think of anything significant that occurred recently. I do want to make a few closing comments on solar facilities. The current text amendments will require a lot of vigilance on part of our citizens. I will need to check regularly the PGJM interconnectivity feasibility study, so we have an inkling of what's maybe proposed in the future. And I want landowners to be very careful as they proceed, if they proceed, with any leasing agreements. I, I think it's an excellent option for landowners, but I think there has to be a degree of care because you need to realize liability goes back to the landowner, not to the solar company. So give it a great deal of thought. And my personal recommendation is to hire a lawyer that's familiar with leases. We don't enforce the lease. We enforce the county regulations. So best of luck to anybody that goes forward on that endeavor. Any other comments?
I have one last thing, Commissioner Tab. Has the county commission decided when we're going to start holding in-person meetings again and socially distanced? I know a lot of boards have been doing that for quite some time, and now we have students back in school. I just want to, I want to have an idea of when folks think that may occur.
I'm not comfortable doing that at this time. I've told you about my personal situation, and, you know, putting staff at risk, bringing the public in, you know, I, it would, we'd have to come up with a format for that to be done, in my opinion, right now.
That's, I've gotten questions regarding that. I just want to see if there's some sort of a message we can tell the public. So if it's up in the air right now, that's fine, but, I mean, at some point in time, it needs to occur, and we need to follow CDC guidelines, so.
Right. I, I would hope when the numbers get down, but, and we have been really, in my opinion, very fortunate, you know, considering our surrounding counties and surrounding states. I want to keep it that way, because, yeah, I, I would love to go back to in-person meetings, I think. I think we all have better conversations, but that's my opinion.
Maybe reassess it at the beginning of each month?
That's agreeable with me.
So we're reassessing it today, maybe we'll reassess it November 1?
What do other commissioners think?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I mean, I, I'd love to get back to in-person, too, but I think, you know, given the current circumstances, I think we just have to be considerate of everyone, and I know everyone feels the same way.
Yeah. Any other comments on that? Okay. Well, perhaps staff will put a reminder at the beginning of each month so we can, you know, look at that and what the situation is. I see Stephanie shaking her head yes, so.
We'll do that.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before us?
If we adjourn, in that case.
All right. All right. Been properly moving and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
You guys are right.
Yeah.